Thank you. Okay, so, uh... Any more speakers? Okay, Councilor Capone, you got the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, members. If we could please have Katie before us for the purposes of the citation. And Katie is a wonderful person. You can see, you're well-loved by your city, and you're an excellent ambassador for the city. So...[64.82][64.82](laughing) She's gonna kick back and forth. So, the citation we have, it says, "Be it hereby known to all that the Everett City Council is honored to the mayor offer their sincerest congratulations to Katie Rogers in recognition of being awarded the 2018-2019 Greater Lynn Photographic Association's Image of the Year in her selection as a second overall photographer for projected images. The entire city government extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued good fortune going forward, given this 24th day of June 2019, sponsored by the entire Everett City Council." So, congratulations.[103.61][103.61](applause)
So, I just wanted to say thank you to all of my friends on the council. It means a lot to me to have your support. Everett has been a continuous theme in not only my life, but all of the artwork, all of the work that I've done in my life. And often, the arts aren't always recognized or valued as much as they should be, so, on behalf of the arts in general, I really appreciate getting recognized tonight. Thank you so much.[134.06][134.06](applause)
Katie, would you like to come up here? Would you guys come up? We'll take a group chat. Put you in the middle. Are you taking the photos? Can I ask you to do mine, too?
I'm not too good yet.[142.06][142.06](laughing)
Did anybody make money yesterday? Anybody? How'd you go with the money? Anybody? Got any money?
Yes, a little bit. I'll work another hour. Come on. Oh, am I going up? Okay. Yeah, let me take one with you. Well, Tom's already up there.[155.06][155.06](laughing) All right. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. I'm gonna do another one.[160.06][160.06](laughing) One, two, three. I'm gonna do one, two, three. And then, can I get in one? You wanna do this? Can you do one for me?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.[170.06][170.06](inaudible)
Yeah, nice to meet you, Tom. Hi, Jeffrey. Are you done? I'm gonna shake your hand. You've got a better attendance record than most people. How are you, sir? Good evening, gentlemen. How are you? How are you? Hey. You're all right? Yes. You're all right? Yeah. Thank you, Jeffrey. All right. I will tomorrow. There might be a chance.
Clerk, when you are ready, we'll do a roll.
All right. Councilor Capone?
Yep.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yeah.
Councilor DePiero?
Here.
Councilor Hanlon?
Here.
Councilor Marchese?
Yeah.
Councilor McKinnon?
Here.
Councilor Napolitano?
Here.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yeah.
And President Delasola?
Yeah.
Ten members present, one absent. You do have a quorum.
Please stand salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to note, Councilor McKinnon had a family event and is unable to be here tonight. Councilor Hanlon?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to have a moment of personal privilege, if it's all right with everyone.
Sure.
Okay. I just want to point out that City Clerk Sergio Canario has been appointed by the Massachusetts City Clerks Association as a member of the Legislative Committee, which is a big committee to do a lot of work, which drafts the bylaws through the Association and writes opinions to legislation before the Massachusetts Legislature. City Clerk Canario has also been selected as one of the three members of the City Clerks Association's Board of Director, which is another big job, and it is currently serving as a role as a lobbyist for the Association. Last week, he testified before the Joint Committee on Elections at the State House in favor of House Bill 69999. And just to note that he's the youngest City Clerk in the state, and has been a clerk for less than two years, and I'm glad that he's been with us. And his appointment is a proud moment for him, and for the city of Everett, and for the city council, as he is moving up in the ranks of the City Clerks Association. There's about 35 cities?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six cities now? It's moved up, too. There's 56 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and it's not an easy job being a City Clerk in that Association. Everybody vies for the attention, and to be appointed, this is a great feather in his cap and ours. So, congratulations, my friend.
Thank you, boss.[284.12][284.12](applause)
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Clerk, can you read number one on the agenda, please?
Item number one is a public hearing offered by Councilor Richard Delasola Jr. as president. To all parties interested in the public hearing to allow National Grid of North Andover, Massachusetts, grant of permission to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way or ways herein named Plan Number 27953022, Chelsea Street National Grid, to install 13-inch PVC conduit from MH number B 738 onto the property at 176-178 Chelsea Street.
Thank you. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. President, is the petitioner here?
Yes, he is.
Could we please have the petition before us?
Motion.
Just...
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Ayes have it. Just state your name and your position, please.
Yes, my name's Mike Cordima from National Grid Electric, Senior Designer.
Thank you. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. If you could please just give an overview of what exactly you're looking to do with this project.
Okay, the customer who owns that building, their service is on the far side of the building. They want to bring it over closer, right in front of our... We have a manhole in the sidewalk, so we're gonna have wires installed through there to service him and these two commercial customers there. Thank you.
How long of a job is that? What kind of hours? Is it gonna tie up traffic at all?
Our Civil Department, if they do the digging, it could probably be done in a day and a half, including curing the one panel of sidewalk concrete.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions, colleagues.
Counselor Matuski, and then Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke with this representative from National Grid earlier. If it's okay with you, I was emailed by a party on McKinley Street as we talked about.
Yes.
And he emailed me that there was no action taken on that street regarding... Was it a crooked pole, or the...
Well, the pole... That pole was petitioned by RCN to go, you know, for an attachment, and in order for them to attach, we would've had to do all this work to replace the pole, and so, they abandoned that pole, and we just left it as is. If you have something for me?
Does that pole look like it's gonna fall over?
It's been there forever and ever, but if you have an issue, I can take it back to the company and we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, would you do that, sir? I would really appreciate it. This gentleman took the time to come to City Hall, and that was several months ago. I'm not exactly sure.
Counselor Matuski.
And, yeah, on McKinley Street, and Counselor DePiero and I discussed it also. And he was quite sincere. He emailed me, and I know it's not part of this petition here, but if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
No, sir. No bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hanlon?
Through you to our guest. You had indicated that you're gonna repair the sidewalk?
Correct, the concrete panel.
And also the street.
No street work, sir. This is a sidewalk, manhole, and the building is like right behind, so it's really a...
Thank you very much. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions for our guest?
Second motion.
Thank you very much.
To open the public hearing?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Anybody in the audience in favor of this petition? Anybody in favor of this petition? Third time, anybody in favor?
Yeah.
If you can come up and speak. Okay. Thank you. That part is closed? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposing this petition? Last time, anybody opposed?
Favorable action. Second motion.
Close public petition?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
Favorable action?
Second.
Favorable action. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays. You have passed the order. Counselors, I would...
Thank you, gentlemen.
There's one person on the side and chief for item number 13.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and take item number 13.
Second.
Public participation first, right?
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion, open public participation?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Oh, yeah.
There's no one on for public participation?
No problem.
Anybody wanna speak?
Do we have a side?
Anybody?
I think those two gentlemen are on.
Yeah, they are in for item number 13.
But they weren't on the side and chief.
No, they weren't on the side and chief. No, no, those are the people here for that.
Don't worry.
Yeah. They didn't sign.
Anybody in the audience want to speak on any item? Anybody want to speak?
Close.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, accept the previous minutes of the meetings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it. Read number 13, please.
Number 13, Mr. President, is a petition offered by Councilor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new open-air parking license for Ministerio Monte de Seón at 108 through 114 Spring Street. Please note, this is a report from the Committee on Community and Business Development.
Mr. Chairman, accept the communication placed on file.
Seconded.
Favorable action.
Yep, so...
Any restrictions on it?
Yes, obviously with general restrictions, and also that they must comply with all... So, it's to approve with the understanding that they shall comply with all current zoning ordinances, because there are some zoning issues, so they'll have to go before ZBA. And they were aware... They were informed that, and maybe even planning. So, that's what the condition. Yes, it's the church.
Counselor Hanlon?
So, this is a church. They do not need this license for their church parking, because it's part of the doing business house, but they do need it for the extra business that they want to use. So, they're going to use their lot for, I think it was three or four local spots, for containers and for, what do you call those? Box trucks that would take items that they ship down to other countries. So, they take in donations and ship them. So, they needed either some type of subsidiary license. That's why they requested an open air, so that way, they could park these without having any issues, because otherwise, they would not be in compliance with zoning.
The permit is for containers, not vehicles?
Containers and vehicles. The general parking for the parishioners is not part of it, but those extra vehicles, the box trucks that would be there, I think they said one every month or so, give or take, and then for the other containers, this would allow them that open-air parking license.
And we know where they're shipping?
I don't know exactly, but the donations, it could be clothes, food. It goes to other countries, so they take in donations and ship them out. The exact products, I couldn't tell you. There are two people here from the business, so if you wanted to have any questions...
From the church?
From the church, sorry, you know.
Yeah, I would like to have them come forward.
Yeah.
I want to make sure.
They are here, so...
Will you have them... A petition, President?
And Dennis Hernandez is here, if you'd like to invite him up.
Like to invite him up, Counselor?
Yes, please.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Favorable action?
Second.
Favorable action. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays. You have passed the order. Counselors, I would...
Thank you, gentlemen.
There's one person on the side and chief for item number 13.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and take item number 13.
Second. Public participation first, right?
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion, open public participation?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Oh, yeah.
There's no one on for public participation?
No problem.
Anybody wanna speak?
Just ask questions.
Anybody?
I think those two gentlemen are on.
Yeah, they are in for item number 13.
But they weren't on the side and chief.
No, they weren't on the side and chief.
They stood up for...
No, no, those are the people here for that.
Don't worry.
Yeah. They didn't sign.
Anybody in the audience want to speak on any item? Anybody want to speak?
Close.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, accept the previous minutes of the meetings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it. Read number 13, please.
Number 13, Mr. President, is a petition offered by Councilor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new open-air parking license for Ministerio Monte de Seón at 108 through 114 Spring Street. Please note, this is a report from the Committee on Community and Business Development.
Mr. Chairman, accept the communication placed on file.
Seconded.
Favorable action.
Yep, so...
Any restrictions on it?
Yes, obviously with general restrictions, and also that they must comply with all... So, it's to approve with the understanding that they shall comply with all current zoning ordinances, because there are some zoning issues, so they'll have to go before ZBA. And they were aware... They were informed that, and maybe even planning. So, that's what the condition. Yes, it's the church.
Counselor Hanlon?
So, this is a church. They do not need this license for their church parking, because it's part of the doing business house, but they do need it for the extra business that they want to use. So, they're going to use their lot for, I think it was three or four local spots, for containers and for, what do you call those? Box trucks that would take items that they ship down to other countries. So, they take in donations and ship them, so they needed either some type of subsidiary license. That's why they requested an open air, so that way, they could park these without having any issues, because otherwise, they would not be in compliance with zoning.
The permit is for containers, not vehicles?
Containers and vehicles. The general parking for the parishioners is not part of it, but those extra vehicles, the box trucks that would be there, I think they said one every month or so, give or take, and then for the other containers, this would allow them that open-air parking license.
And we know where they're shipping?
I don't know exactly, but the donations, it could be clothes, food. It goes to other countries, so they take in donations and ship them out. The exact products, I couldn't tell you. There are two people here from the business, so if you wanted to have any questions...
From the church?
From the church, sorry, you know.
Yeah, I would like to have them come forward.
Yeah.
I want to make sure.
They are here, so...
Will you have them... A petition, President?
And Dennis Hernandez is here, if you'd like to invite him up.
Like to invite him up, Counselor?
Yes, please.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Just...
Just state your name.
Hi, my day is Pastor Dennis Hernandez. So, we coming for the... Want to know what happened with the permit, with the condition. I don't know. You know, we want to know what is the second fit, step.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I...
Counselor Hanlon?
The items that you're going to be shipping... I'm not interested yet, Church Martin. The items that you're gonna be shipping to another country?
Really, I don't know right now, because some people have company for the same specific, like, bags or, how you say the... It comes in, it's los cajas, los dejones?
The box.
Containers. Yeah. Sometime, when there's the container, there's a lot, we go fast, the same other countries, San Salvador, Honduras, Costa Rica, Mexico, maybe República Dominicana.
So, different countries?
Different countries, yeah.
And where are you going to get the items that you're gonna be shipping?
Maybe New York. New York?
New York.
New York?
From your church members?
When... Really, right now, I don't know. I don't know, because the other guy, Mr. Jackson, he know how go to make it shipping.
Hang on for one second. Mr. Chairman, through you, my clerk. We have the right to inspect these things?
I do, and so does an ISD. Any license that we go for, there are, like, your agents, so the agent of the council is me, and the ISD always has authority within reason to come and inspect. But I do want to note that the chairperson to the community business development would have some insight on this. That'd be Counselor DeFlorio, if you'd like to give her a moment to kind of explain it. She spoke in depth with the prior gentleman.
No, if we can choose a gentleman before we do anything.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DeFlorio?
No, Mr. Chairman, just...
Okay, Counselor Hanlon?
You know, the only reason I'm really interested in is because, you know, I don't know how long we all go back, but I know that I go back to this, and we had trouble like this once before, where we allow people to fill up containers and ship them out, and we had major problems, and that's what I'm just hoping never happens. That's why we have someone that can go in and inspect these containers and everything, you know? I like to trust people all the time, but still, I want to be able to say that we know exactly what's going on, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you. You know, this is very difficult, because you really don't want to go against people donating and charity. But unfortunately, it's just not the right place for it. I mean, you've seen, even at the Salvation Army's, where people just throw stuff on the floor everywhere, okay? And I'm not against the church, I'm not against what they're doing, but do we give them the license, and if all this happens, and there's stuff everywhere, do we take the license away? I don't think they've understood what we're saying right now. So, do we make them sign something that, if there's stuff all over the place? We don't know what's gonna be there. Is there food? Are we gonna have rats? Are we gonna have mice? I mean, this is a very tedious situation. Broken down cars. What do you... It's too broad. There's nothing that specifies what they're gonna put there.
But we can specify. It can be a condition of the license. You're allowed to put conditions on licenses, reasonable conditions.
But what do you put conditions on? We don't want canned foods that are bent? We don't want canned foods that are opened? I mean, what conditions do you put?
You could do a few things. One, you could make sure they baited, because they are containers, and I think we already have a container license that Counselor Hanlon might have proposed a few years... Or Counselor McKinnon, I'm trying to remember, but there is definitely something that goes into effect about containers and baiting. Also, you could state that there's no vehicles that are broken down or anything like that, but if they're gonna take in, you know, just a couple of box trucks, that it's limited to that, no more than a couple of box trucks a month at most, and no more than two or three containers. You know, put some type of limitation on it. It'll be on their license.
And who's gonna see if it's baited or not? Are you gonna go out...
ISD...
How much work can you do?
ISD will do that. I mean, I don't want to volunteer them, but that's part of their duties, and we work very well, hand in hand.
And what happens if it's not baited? Do we take the license away, or do we fine it?
It's part of their condition. You... What I like to do is educate. This is what you were supposed to do. Here's a warning, here's a fine. You know, I always have a... I have a procedure I follow in my office. You know, I never just... I try never to just fine unless it's an egregious violation. We tell them, this is what you did wrong, fix it, fine.
And we also have hours when they can load, and when they can unload?
Yes, and that I wrote... Yeah, well, zoning would be part of this. You really can't do things before 6:00 a.m. and past 10:00 or 11:00, but I would... You can narrow that. You just can't give them greater than that without their special license, so you can say, not before 8:00 o'clock in the morning, not past 8:00 o'clock at night, if that's what you want. And I think we did something like that.
We did do something like that.
I think it was 8:00 and 6:00, or 8:00 and 7:00, the pastor said.
Yeah.
So, I mean, those are conditions that are within your jurisdiction to do, so if you want to grant it, that's what I would recommend. Put some reasonable restrictions. I mean, I do inspect on occasion. ISD's always out in that area especially. Do as you wish, but I mean, I just wanted to give you that insight.
Okay.
So we're coming for the, when you know what happened with the permit, with the condition, I don't know, you know, when you know what is the second fit, state.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I...
Counsel Helen.
The items that you're going to be shipping, I'm not interested yet, church members. The items that you're going to be shipping to another country?
Uh, really, I don't know right now because some people have company for the same specific, like, bags or, how you say the, it comes in, it's the los caja, los deones?
The box.
Containers, yeah. Sometime when there's, the container is, is a lot, we go fast, the same other countries, Salvador, Honduras, Costa Rica, Mexico, maybe República Dominicana.
So different countries.
Different countries, yeah.
And where are you going to get the items that you're going to be shipping?
Maybe Nova York, New York?
New York.
New York.
From your church members?
Uh, when, really, right now, I don't know, I don't know because the other guy, Mr. Jackson, he know how go to this, make it a shipping.
Okay, hang on for one second. Mr. Chairman, through you, our clerk, we have the right to inspect these things?
I do, and so does an ISD. Any license that we go for, there are, like, your agents. So the agent of the council is me, and the ISD always has authority within reason to come and inspect. But I do want to note that the chairperson to the, to the community business development would have some insight on this, that'd be Counselor DeFlorio, if you'd like to give her a moment to kind of explain it. She spoke in depth with the prior gentleman.
No, if we can choose a gentleman before we do anything.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Counsel DeFlorio.
No, Mr. Chairman, just, just...
Okay, Counsel Helen.
Uh, you know, the only reason I'm really interested in is because, you know, I don't know how long we all go back, but I know that I go back to this, and we had trouble like this once before, where we allow people to fill up containers and ship them out, and we had major problems, and that's what I'm just hoping never, never happens. That's why I'm, we have someone that can go in and inspect these containers and everything, you know, and I like to trust people all the time, but still I want to be able to say that we know exactly what's going on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you. You know, this is very difficult because you really, you really don't want to go against people donating and charity.
Right.
But unfortunately, it's just not the right place for it. I mean, you've seen, even at the Salvation Armies, where people just throw stuff on the floor everywhere, okay? And I'm not against the church, I'm not against what they're doing, but do we give them the license and then, "For this happens, is there stuff everywhere? Do we take the license away?" I don't think they've understood what we're saying right now. So, do we make them sign something that, that, if there's stuff all over the place, we don't know what's going to be there? Is there food? Are we going to have rats? Are we going to have mice? I mean, this is a very tedious situation. Broken down cars, what do you, it's too broad. There's nothing that specifies what they're going to put there.
But we can specify. It can be a condition of the license. You're allowed to put conditions on licenses, reasonable conditions.
But what do you put conditions on? We don't want canned foods that are bent? We don't want canned foods that are opened? I mean, what conditions do you put?
You could do, you could do a few things. One, you could make sure they baited, because they are containers, and I think we already have a container license that Counselor Hanlon might have proposed a few years, or Counselor McKinnon, I'm trying to remember. But there is definitely something that goes into effect about containers and baiting. Also, you could state that there's no vehicles that are broken down or anything like that, but if they're going to take in, you know, just a couple of box trucks, that it's limited to that. No more than a couple of box trucks a month at most, and no more than two or three containers. You know, put some type of limitation on it. It'll be on their license.
And who's going to see if it's baited or not? Are you going to go out, how much work can you do?
ISD, ISD will do that. I mean, I don't want to volunteer them, but that's part of their duties, and they, we work very well, hand in hand.
And what happens if it's not baited? Do we take the license away, or do we fine it?
It's part of their condition. You, you, what I like to do is educate. This is what you were supposed to do. Here's a warning, here's a fine. You know, I always have a, I have a procedure I follow in my office. You know, I never just, I try never to just fine unless I have, unless it's an egregious violation. We tell them, "This is what you did wrong, fix it, fine."
And we also have hours, when they can load, and when they can unload?
Yes, and that I, yeah, well, zoning would, would be part of this. You really can't do things before 6:00 AM and past 10:00 or 11:00, but I would, you can narrow that. You just can't give them greater than that without their special license. So you can say, "Not before 8:00 o'clock in the morning, not past 8:00 o'clock at night," if that's what you want. And I think we did something like that.
We did do something like that.
I think it was 8:00 and 6:00, or 8:00 and 7:00, the pastor said. So, I mean, those are conditions that are within your jurisdiction to do. So if you want to grant it, that's what I would recommend. Put some reasonable restrictions. I mean, I, I do inspect on occasion. ISD's always out in that area especially. Do as you wish, but I mean, I just wanted to give you that insight.
Okay. Counsel McCasey, and then Counsel McGlaughlin.
I'll yield to Mr. Hamlet if he has a quick question, then I'll...
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to know, I mean, not for any other purpose, but I'd like to know their country of origin and what language they speak. So if I go, if I do go down there, I would like to go down with someone that speaks their language so that...
Yeah.
Because I'm really going to look in this book, this watch this place, you know?
I'm not positive. We can ask the petitioners, but I, it didn't sound Portuguese, I thought it was Spanish, but I would, I would, I would ask them.
Okay. Could we ask them from here?
That way, yeah, you could call them up and just ask them. That way we know who to come up and have translate when we need.
Excuse me, what, what language?
Spanish.
Spanish?
Okay.
South American, Spanish?
Spanish, Spanish, Counsel, yeah.
There you go.
Counsel McCasey.
Yes, where is this lot on Spring Street?
Yeah, um...
Where's the church, actually?
There, it's a, it's a brick building. Right now, they're making it to a church. So if you're coming down, I have the, I have the map. Down Spring Street, at the end of Spring Street, across the way on...
Down by Bond Brothers?
The corner of, corner of Second and Spring. Am I correct?
Yep. International Springs, you're going to make a church out of it?
Yeah.
Is that polluted, please?
Yeah, if you go down first, first right, and it's on your left.
So they're building, on the right-hand side, they're building a, now is that, did we just rezone all that area?
Correct, that's, correct, that's why if, if you're, if you're approving it, they have to go before zoning.
I was going to say, yeah.
Zoning would have to approve this also.
All right, so there's going to be...
And mostly, and probably planning.
So there's going to be a big church that, to build, the old oil building.
The church, yeah. The church is by right, but the other stuff he needs, for this, they would need zoning relief.
Church is by right, we got, don't we have any parking restrictions on that, nothing?
The, they have the setup, so I can't speak fully on it. It's not, not my specialty, zoning, but, but I do know that they can operate some of it, but they need this.
Now, how about the cars donated and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's why. You need an opening air, and then they'd have to go before zoning, and I think planning, but definitely zoning.
I mean, I have a, police in East Washington does this, and it's, it's not a pretty place. So just remember what you're putting there.
Again, you don't have to approve this, I'm just telling you...
Oh, we're probably not.
What, what, I'm telling you...
All right, thank you.
What they need to do, yeah.
Counsel McGlaughlin, and then Counsel Capone.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, one of my colleagues just kind of touched on it, but I was wondering if there was a translator that we could have to come in, actually open the dialogue with these individuals, because I'm not quite sure that they understand what we're asking them, and I'm not sure that we're communicating with these individuals in the best manner that we can. So I don't know if there's somebody in the building that we can use as a translator.
We can, but just so you know, that these are, we did have the other, the pastor who helps run this place, he was here two weeks ago. He spoke English, and he was very aware of what we, what the committee had stated. I came and spoke on, well, on behalf of the city, and Counselor, I think, Capone and DeFlorio, they were all here, and he understood...
And the pastor understood clearly...
He understood the conditions we were putting on it, am I correct to state that?
Okay. Because I am also very concerned by opening this type of an opportunity for these individuals. What else could we be opening up across the city of Everett if we gave this opportunity? So this would be a drop-off center for donations? You can go and donate, sort of like what's at the Salvation Army on Main Street?
Similar.
Similar to that type of thing, Mr. Clerk?
From what, from what he made us understand, it was very similar.
So I think you could really be opening up a Pandora's Box if you will. By allowing this one, where do, where do you stop? I understand that having these types of centers are important for donation purposes, and especially when a country gets hit with a hurricane or, or some sort of a, of a storm, you want to try to help them out, but opening this up permanently, I think, is, is a direction that we need to be very careful on. And I just want to make sure that they understood what we were asking, and what stipulations we may be putting on this, if it was to move forward tonight. But if you're saying the pastor understood all of that fully, then bring back, no need for a translator.
Thank you. Counsel Capone, and Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The pastor who was at the committee was very fluent in English. I think our clerk has the report. What I would do, we did put some restrictions on hours of operation in terms of loading the trucks for donations, and what I would suggest is we'd have our clerk read the report, and if the members still have concerns, then maybe it's something that should be postponed. But at least read the report and see if that answers questions.
Counsel DeFlorio, did you want to speak, or are you also?
It's fine for the clerk to read the report. I don't have a problem with it. I was at the meeting, obviously. I cheer the meeting. I don't have an issue with the containers, donating food and canned goods, or blankets, or whatever. I have an issue with them fixing cars. So, because of that, I will...
Yeah, they can't, they can't, an opening air parking license does not give you the, the right to fix vehicles. It just gives you the, the right to store vehicles.
They're going to store vehicles that are not registered.
Correct, but you can't fix them. There is a difference.
For donation, right?
Yeah, it would be only for donation.
You can put that as a restriction.
Correct, but it, but an opening air doesn't allow you.
That's what's going to cause the junkyard, is what I'm going to say.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay.
Why don't we have him read the report?
All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
The report from the June 10th CBD meeting, the city clerk Cornelio and petitioner Minister Jackson Montoya were present. Minister Montoya explained that the parking would be for vehicles of the congregation members during service hours, three church passenger vans and a bus, unregistered box trucks, and containers that will contain donations for third-world countries, as well as some heavy-duty equipment during construction, which is not part of this opening air. He stated that he expected his congregation to be about 250 members, with church services on Wednesday and Friday from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and Sunday from 1:30 to 5:00 PM. He indicated that he planned to have one or two containers on site in addition to the two or three box trucks that would typically be on site for five-week periods. He noted that the box trucks and containers were sent overseas from ports in New Jersey, New York, and from Fall River, Massachusetts. He informed the committee that the loading of these trucks and containers would be done on weekends or after work on weekdays. He disclosed that the current donation items were being stored at church facilities in Chelsea and Somerville until the Everett City construction was completed. The committee recommended that the petition, the petition be referred out favorable with conditions that included all current zoning must be complied with, no mechanical work was being performed, and no loading and unloading of containers and trucks before 8:00 AM or after 7:00 PM daily. The committee voted to report back, report back to the city council with a favorable, recommendation for favorable action with conditions that included all current zoning must be complied with, no mechanical work being performed, and no loading, unloading trucks after 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Counselor McKinnon was recorded as opposed.
Counsel Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to understand this. I know where the lot is. They had a sign in Winnicott... Okay, so...
Which they had a permit for me.
The church is the brick building?
That's set back. I think it's kind of set back, if you're, that corner lot.
I've been there years ago.
Yeah, it's, it's that, it's that, that big brick building that's set back on the lot, because you have all that space in the front there.
So the church people bought...
I couldn't tell you.
This property?
Yes.
Recently?
I can't tell you how long, within the last year.
You know what's puzzling is we rezoned that whole area. There's some restrictions there now.
Yep.
We just opened up the Pioneer Apartments, not too far up the street, and they're beautiful, and it was a great grand opening. They actually put some hospitality on, and it was worth going to. And the Market Forge property is right across the street from this, and the, and I know they bought, the people that own that property bought the check cash in place a couple of years ago. So my thought is that, you know, I'm not saying that a parking lot in, in a church is a bad thing there, but, you know, this is something that should go to the planning board or the zoning board before we even vote on it. I don't want to vote for a license that, there's a whole new zoning thing down there now, the Parkway Overlay District.
And you can?
I mean, we better, we got to be careful what we're voting on here. I, I don't feel comfortable until this is approved by, what was it, the planning board. I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the planning board for their approval to make sure that we know, now look at the, look at the, the storage facility that we couldn't stop. So they, you know, I'm not saying this is a bad thing. I'm, what I'm saying is I don't want to vote for something that is going to, excuse me? I mean, rather than vote against it, I'd rather sign it to the planning board for their approval with no, well, naturally, with no recommendation, and let her, let them tell us what, what the story is there, because it's all been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I have a second. On, yes, on the motion, Counsel Hamlin.
Chelsea, sorry, Somerville in the, I think it's Somerville and Chelsea. Chelsea and Somerville. Fall River is where the containers get shipped from, or from New York, New Jersey. Yeah, and I would send it to the zoning, ZBA, and planning probably both, just for their review prior to passage, and then it can come back. I would send it to both. Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
We're going all over the place here. Counsel, we had a motion, but I have Counsel DePiero wants to speak, and Counsel Seminelli.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. President, through you for Counsel Miss Seminelli. Just when the petitioner comes back, that they have an English-speaking person with them so that we can talk back and forth.
Translator, absolutely. We can request that.
On the motion, I have Counsel McCasey.
I mean, I'm going to speak. I know you just want to send it and get it out of our hands, but I'm not voting for this thing. I mean, we rezoned the place to change things over. Another year or two, I mean, even the business that, the property that we own, we looking forward to changing over, to doing something different. I sure don't want to rent something out and have people have to look at the containers out there, used cars out there. I mean, that's what we're changing it for. We're not changing it to go backwards, and that's where we're going with this. So forget about the zoning board, just make a decision right here. We shouldn't be putting that crap there. If you're going to put a, church is one thing, that's great. I don't think we have to have a Morgan Memorial and everything. I mean, we, I have a partners on a piece of property in East Washington, it's horrible. They have cars out there, they ship them all over the place, there's boxes, containers, clothes, I mean, I, I would not welcome this into the city of, church I'm welcoming, but I'm not going to welcome running, running, putting stuff in here, having a shipping, this is, this is what it's going to be. That's all it's going to be. There's three churches going to be putting all this stuff in one place. This isn't going to be just one container. I mean, if you get onto the mall, there's clothes all over the place, and those things looks terrible. So I mean, send it to the zoning board, but I'm not going to vote for it, see if they approve it. I mean, all we're doing is open up a semi-junkyard again. That's what it's going to come, come down to it.
Refer it to the planning board, Mr. President.
We have a motion, go to the planning board. We have another motion? Counsel Capone?
I just wanted to amend that motion to also include the zoning board of appeals as well. Send it to both of them at the same time, and then get whatever their responses are, then we can make our decision at that point.
Have a second.
There are two motions, the, the, one for favorable action and the one for the, to refer. The one to refer is going to take precedence, so we'll vote on that first, if it fails, then you can vote on the next motion, just so you know. So this is to refer to the zoning board and planning board. I guess, you can, you can do it by, please vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I would say it's the chairs.
We'll do a roll call.
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Counsel...
This is for referral?
Is it for referral, so, yes, because we weren't sure who vote, who voted for what. So Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel DePiero?
No.
Counsel Hamlin?
Assistant to the plan?
Yes.
This is the, send it to the planning, yeah. Counsel McCasey?
No.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
No.
And President Delisola?
No.
That would be four ayes, six nays. That has failed. The motion is now for favorable action, and I would do a roll call on that. Mr. President?
Yes.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Is it to grant the license? Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel DePiero?
No.
Counsel Hamlin?
No.
Counsel McCasey?
No.
Counsel Matuski?
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
And Counsel Seminelli?
No.
And President Delisola?
No.
That would be three ayes and seven nays. You have failed to pass the license. There are no more people signed in.
Anybody else want to sign in?
There are, there's not. We can try to take the mayor's staff as quickly as we can.
Counsel Hamlin?
Turn that on.
Mr. Chairman, through you to our clerk, when can they come back to apply? Six months?
If they...
How many years?
Under our rules, when you, when you send something back, they did not withdraw. So it's one year. When they withdrew, it was six months.
Okay.
You're welcome, because we just changed it. It was two and one. So item number...
Item two, please, on the agenda.
Item number two. There's a order offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president. Dear, dear honorable members, I hereby submit for your consideration an order that the below school department vehicles be declared surplus. The reference inventory is in need of costly repairs and is no longer of use to the school department. Once declared surplus by this honorable city council, the inventory will be sold by public auction. The vehicles are a 1988 Chevrolet rack truck, a, number two is a 1999 cafeteria box truck, and the third item is a 2000 Chevrolet Astro van. All vehicles are 19 years or older.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel McCasey?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Yes.
President Delisola?
Yes.
That would be ten ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Thank you. Can you be number three on the agenda?
Item number three is a donation, an order to accept a donation offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president. That the Everett City Council hereby accepts the following donations to the City of Everett Celebration account. Honda Cazza Boston, $250. Beta, $500. Century Bank, $500. Stateline Graphics, $100. KP Law, PC, $500. Kelly &amp; Ryan Associates, $500. Olivera's Enterprises, $150, and PEGM Transportation, $5,000 for a total of, sorry, I don't think it's a total.
Accept the donations with letter thanks?
Seven thousand, four hundred, four hundred dollars.
Seconded. Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel McCasey?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Yes.
President Delisola?
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order. Item number, excuse me, item number four?
Number four, please.
Is an appropriation offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the amount of $16,367, sixty, excuse me.
Did you miss number four?
That the Everett City Council hereby approves an order to transfer $200,000 from the fire salary account into the employee leave buyback, sorry. I do, Mr. President, I would recommend that you, if you're going to vote on this this evening, that you declare it routine, if you believe it to be. Okay? And...
Favorable action.
And if you're going to vote, I would suspend rule...
Move, suspend rule 13.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, have it.
Favorable action.
Seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel McCasey?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
Yes.
President Delisola?
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order.
You can be number five on the agenda, please.
Item number five is an appropriation offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the amount of $16,367,000 be appropriated by borrowing as requested in the CIP general fund budget.
I'm going to request, request this routine?
And...
Item number five. Counsel Capone?
Thank you. If we could please have Mr. Demus before us.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, have it. You know, we all know who you are, just state your name, please.
Good evening, Eric Demus CFO.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our invited guest. Could you please just explain the process, timing in terms of borrowing, et cetera, and how everything comes into play with the CIP with passing this appropriation?
Sure. So the action that you would be taking tonight is the authorization for us to bond these projects, and actually, at the same times, it gives us the ability to expend and get these objects completed. Historically, the, I actually only bond once a year. Costs the city a lot of money to actually go through the entire bonding process, so we manage our money in a way that we can actually only do it once a year. So I just issued debt back in February, and we'd be looking to issue the same debt next year at the same time, roughly the same time period.
Okay. And obviously, the items that were on there, we've seen them, they're all necessary activities. The, the only thing that I would ask that you bring back to the administration is with regards to the park designs, just stagger them so that we're not doing all the parks at the same time. We ran into a problem before where there was nowhere for the kids to play. So I want to make sure we stagger them in such a way that we're completing before we really start any meaningful work on a new park.
I will have that conversation with all parties involved, but we have had that conversation with Mr. Susan. The parks are being staggered to make sure that kids in certain neighborhoods have the ability to use some facility.
And the one other caveat I throw in there is that Florence Street took so long on the first phase, I would ask that maybe we start there. That would be my own caveat. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counsel McGlaughlin, and then Counsel Hamlin.
So, Mr. Demus, these are the projects that you laid out to us at the last meeting two weeks ago that is going to move forward from this authorization, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what do we see as a timeframe of completion on some of these projects? Will it happen this calendar fiscal year, or will they all happen?
Yes. Any of the projects that we have listed, we plan on starting and starting now. This is not the entire CIP. These are just the items that we wanted to get so that These are just the items that we wanted to get so that we don't lose the construction season.
But there is additional CIP, uh, projects that will kick off in the upcoming fiscal year that's not part of this $16 million appropriation?
There are additional items that were included in the original CIP, um, that we will be presenting later in the, uh, sometime in the future, later this calendar year.
Okay. Thank you.
I have Counsel Hamlin and then Counsel Marchese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Was it, was it $16 million that we've borrowed? Have we borrowed that for a certain amount of time?
Uh, $16 million, yes.
$16 million? Now, this is not the first time we've done this, and we've done this year, the year, the year, the year. How many of these have we still got, that, that, that are pending that we're still paying off?
Uh, there's a whole host of, um, various, um, items that the city has bonded over the years. What I can tell you, and, and it's a large number of them. Um, the projects are bonded typically staggered anywhere from a minimum of five years for our smaller pieces of equipment, um, to if we were bonding one of the schools, we would go out as long as 40 years. Um, what I can tell you is that, um, next year, we're losing about a million dollars in debt service, um, the year after, about another million. In fiscal '21 is where we see, um, our debt service really start to drop off, where we're gonna start seeing a reduction of about $5 million. What I can tell you is that, um, when I ran the numbers talking about debt today, we're scheduled right now on our debt schedules to pay off 82% of our debt within the next 10 years. So, the city is utilizing aggressive debt, um, repayments.
All right. This, this you had indicated for, you know, this is for a lot of little things.
It is.
That, that, this thing, you know, so we're not counting this as one of those little loans. So, this would be paid off, what, in how many years? Like 10, 15, 20 years?
The majority of these items would be paid off within 10 years.
10 years. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. No more questions.
I would, um, just, please-
Second motion on suspension. So, we have a lot of, we spend rule-
All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it?
Second motion.
Seconded. Roll call vote?
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky? Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delisola?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays. You have, uh, passed the order.
Read number six on the agenda, please.
Item number six is an appropriation offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the amount of $2,485,050 be appropriated by borrowing as requested in the CIP Water Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget.
I'm gonna make this routine. Seconded. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it?
On, on your order-
On your order, Counsel Marchese?
I, I wish we had Mr. Demus up here, just for a quick question.
Sure.
That's all. Just something's... I'm gonna get to it, all right?
I didn't go far.
Good. Mr. Demus, um, it says here, we request the amount to be appropriated by borrowing as requested in the CIP. Do we have other debt in this enterprise fund budget? Uh, you don't, you don't-
Not, not looking for any new debt, but yes, there is existing debt in the water sewer enterprise fund.
Existing debt?
Yes.
All right, so we had something, somebody left in that account, right? Couple million dollars we're subsidizing our, uh, water bills. I believe we're taking a million or two towards it every year on the excess that we had left over?
Yes.
So, we have this, this fund, and we have, we've created debt on this fund. Is that what I'm understanding?
On infrastructure, yes.
On infrastructure. Okay. I was, I always thought that the money that was coming in, uh, plus was paying for the infrastructure work that we had. I know we're borrowing on top of that more money on the water.
Well, the rates that are coming in cover the debt service that's in the operating budget.
Okay. So, like I said, the, what we have in the, the water bills, not necessarily just, obviously, it's not just the water bill. It's also includes a lot more. So, when you're paying your water bill, you're actually paying the debt to have improvements down on your street and everything.
That, that is correct.
All right. And this is paid off to the MWRA, who's doing the work?
The majority, uh, the majority of the enterprise fund debt is to the MWRA?
Yep.
Um, of which are usually interest-free loans. Um, however, with our water work, we actually moved into Phase 10 and 11, so, uh, that works out to be a 75% grant and a 25% interest-free loan. So, when you're looking at the water main replacement as part of this for $629,000?
Yep.
Um, we're actually closer to, uh, 1.4 million. And, um, by doing this, we'll pay back the $629,000 through interest-free, um, loan through the MWRA, and they're funding the other portion through a grant.
Okay. It's one big circle with that money. It's, uh, it's funny when you just think about it. It's, okay. Thank you very much.
I have Counsel Capone and Counsel Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to, to our guest. I know you're prudent, so you kinda answered my question in your response, because I know that the MWRA does, uh, when available, offer, you know, either favorable terms where it's either a reduced interest rate or no interest. And it sounds like that's what we have going on with this one?
It is. So, all three of these issues that total the 2.5 are all through the MWRA?
Okay.
Um, and they all are at, um, I believe all of these are at interest-free loans, but they also, because we moved into Phase 10 and 11-
They were grants.
-there's a very large grant piece-
Exactly.
-that is tied into it.
Well, like 75% of it was grant.
It's 75%.
So, 60, well, 25% of it's gonna be, uh, interest-free loan. So, we're actually just paying back principal and a large part of his grant. So, that's what I figured. So, you answered my question as you did it. I just wanna make sure I got it. Thank you very much. Thank you for always doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Don't leave yet. Counsel Hamlin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, Counsel Marchese and Counsel Capone both asked my questions, and I'm satisfied with the answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give the customer's side.
Thank you.
Favorable action.
Second motion.
On the motion, I get a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Uh, yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delisola?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
That would be ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Read number seven on the agenda, please.
Item number seven is a transfer offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the amount of $50,000 be transferred and appropriated from the CIP Stabilization Fund to the Police Department BMW Motorcycle Account.
Am I, am I declaring this routine? Yes. I don't want it out of time. Some declaiment routine in... All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call vote, please, on number seven.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delisola?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have so passed the order.
You read number eight on the agenda, please.
Number eight is an appointment offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that in accordance with Part Five of the Administrative Code, Section 4H, 2 and 3, I hereby submit for your approval the reappointment of Eric Demus as the Chief Financial Officer and City Auditor for a term of three years expiring June of 2022.
I have Counsel McGlaughlin and then Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we take a lot of votes in these chambers to appoint members, whether it's through a commission or a department head. This appointment this evening is truly a gift to our community. Eric Demus has brought professionalism to a department that is probably one of the most vital departments in our community and probably one of the most important jobs we have as our CFO. Uh, Eric brings professionalism every day and works across the aisle to make sure that everyone is on the same page and understands fully what is happening in our community. And this evening, I could not be prouder to be voting in favor of this. I only wish, as we had previously, a lifetime appointment for this position, because I believe he would be the first to be re, or reserving of that position. Uh, thank you for your time and thank you for your good work, Eric.
Counsel Capone and Counsel DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I, I do think that, uh, that Eric is a tremendous asset for this community, so I wholeheartedly support that and echo the comments of my colleague. Uh, purpose of my, my hand was just to suspend rule 20 in the event that it was necessary.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it be suspended? Uh, Counsel DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, not to repeat what has already been said, uh, but Mr. Demus is an absolute asset to the city, the administration and us. Uh, he's honest, he's sharp, he tries to save the money every which way he can by doing things right. And let's be honest, we're not an easy group to deal with at all times. Uh, some of us more than others, but thank you, Eric, for all you do. And I'd vote for you for a 30-year contract. Thank you.
From the chair, simply, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon, uh, excuse me, Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delisola?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have, um, you have reappointed Mr. Demus for a three-year
You read number nine on the agenda, please.
Item number nine is a petition offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the junk dealer collector license renewal for Carlisle Precious Metals at 24 Dexter Street. This is a renewal. All papers are-
Favorable action.
Dexter Street is actually directly across from the, the new resort. It's... Uh, nope. It is still, uh, it is not in, um, operation, you mean? Uh, the, the place is still owned by the same owners. They do have a license there. They have a few licenses on the, on the location, but they are currently not taking in metals, yes, but they still have a license.
Any more questions on that piece? No questions?
Yeah. Counsel- Counsel Capone?
Counsel? Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Counsel DePiero?
Counsel Hamlin?
No.
Counsel, uh, Counselor Matusky?
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin? Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delisola?
Yes.
That would be, uh, excuse me, eight yeas, one nay. You have so passed the order. Uh, the petition, excuse me, the license.
Can you read number-
Item number 10?
10 on the agenda, please.
Um, is a petition offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the junk dealer collector license renewal for Wentworth Precious Metals LLC at 431 Second Street.
Set a motion.
All papers are in order.
We have a favorable action. I do have a second. Uh, clerk, please read the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Seven, uh, yeas, zero nays. You have passed the petition.
Seven yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order. Uh, please, the clerk, please read the next item on the agenda.
Item number 11, uh, Madam Chairperson, is a petition offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the Psychic Forte Teller license renewal for Psychic Boutique at 1936 Riviera Beach Parkway. Please note, this is not a renewal. Uh, there is a current business in operation there. Uh, the woman that operates it, uh, has a license, but she is bringing on her sister, uh, into the business. And under our ordinances now, we, uh, you need to approve the sister also for the, for the, the license. The, she, she has the license for the, the, but- is in existence, and the current owner is still, uh, in operation. She's just bringing her sis, her sister on as a, uh, an assistant, I guess.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would, uh, move that we refer this to the Business Community Development Committee.
Sure.
I'm, is it on the motion, Counsel Hamlin?
I just wanted to know what, it, we said there was another business there?
She, the, 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 the same business. It's the, called the Psychic Boutique. The woman, uh, I believe her name is Debbie Green. She's currently in operation there, and this is her sister that is also going to get all the sense there.
I had thought that someone told me there was also a used car license there.
There, um, on the left side was a used car license. The property has sold. It is about to become a brewery, if I'm not mistaken?
She's another one?
Uh, yes, which we don't have a li, you know, that's not under our authority, that license, but yes. Um, on the left, you remember, that was where the butcher shop was gonna go?
Yeah, machine shop.
That's, yeah. So, that's where it is. And in the front is the Psychic Boutique. To the right is that, um, the, the liquor store.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, President. Uh, my question is, we license the individual, not the business, because if the business-
So, you license, um, the business, right, but under our revised ordinances, we're gonna start, like, we license the individuals. Uh, remember, I, a while back, we went, we had the young lady that was licensed out of her home, but she was not operating near her home, but she was traveling.
Okay.
Uh, do you remember that? I don't know if you do. But we kinda mimicked Salem's license, because it didn't really work for us to just have the business license. It was after we could, uh, license a business and/or a person. So, this is a person's license. So, it's an individual license that will operate under that license.
So, if she-
If that makes sense.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's okay.
So, if she were to bring in three tellers, say?
She has to come back all the time. Yep.
Yes. This one is not just for the business. The individual's gonna get licensed. The other woman gets the license, because it's her, she owns it, and it's just one license. But anyone, a subsidiary under her, would have to get an individual license.
So, in the committee, the committee members will be interviewing the individual to, well, see whether or not she's qualified? So in the committee, the committee members will be interviewing the individual to, well, see whether or not she's qualified?
The recommendation would be to invite the individual, so we could ask further questions. Because nobody's here tonight, so unfortunately, we can't ask questions.
I just wasn't, I've never done an individual versus a business, so I wasn't...
It's only the second time we've done it.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, it is newer.
Alright, so the motion is to send this to, uh, Business Community Development. I do have a second. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, will we...
Yes, I'm marking you as opposed, Counsel. Sorry, let me just mark that. Okay.
Item number 12.
Item number 12. There's a, there's a Committee on Legislative Affairs Elections report. Uh, Madam Chairperson, there's a resolution offered by Counselor Michael K. Marchese that any new piece of business that is placed on the city council calendar or agenda be sent to committee without discussion.
Do we have a, a report from the committee?
I'm gonna read one second.
What was the recommendation?
Uh, it was reported back to, report back to city council with a recommendation to refer back to sponsor. But the sponsor is here.
You hold this pieces?
Counsel Marchese?
I was in the administration of affairs last year. But, you know, one time we were talking about trying to get the, the, uh, the meetings to our floor a little better. And every time we had a new piece of business, we spoke about the new piece before we sent it. So that's according to the new regulations, the council was supposed to automatically send new business directly to them. I mean, you could try it. I, I think that any new piece of business that is placed on the council calendar, uh, should be, uh, spoken by the sponsor only. And then send it on. Instead of have a discussion there, it should be discussed, obviously, at the council, at a, um...
Committee.
Committee meeting. Then come back for discussion, whatever. So just to keep these going, if there's 50 new pieces on there, you say, okay, uh, this piece by Alden Marchese, I'm gonna direct it to this certain thing. I think this would be a nice piece, bah, 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 and send it on. And I think you're gonna think you need eight people saying the same thing on each piece. I mean, it's an idea just for the new business part only, if you're, you know, interested in moving things along.
Make a motion, favorable action.
Uh, but I, I would, if I may, just, if you do that and it, it works, but I would, I would not just limit it to a committee, that you could either postpone it or send it to a committee. Because some of them just maybe need some review and you don't wanna go in depth. That way, you still get the option to postpone it. It gets automatically sent to another meeting, gives you time to review it.
Well, that's what I mean.
A, a committee doesn't have to necessarily convene, because that might be a daunting task too, where not everything goes to committee. You just need a week to review it.
So, but if you wanted a piece on new business?
Right, so you either you postpone it or send it to committee. That way, it gives you an option. I don't know if that makes sense to you.
Well, you can do that, but the only person that should speak on is the person that, all we're saying is the only person to do is the sponsor.
Oh, I a hundred percent agree, but your piece only says that it shall be referred to a committee. I s- I think it should say committee or be postponed.
Then it, it could be amended to read, uh, also.
I, just a recommendation...
Which I would, which, which seems appropriate.
Yeah, just because some things really don't belong in a committee. And I don't, you don't wanna bog down a committee either. You wanna just postpone it.
But who would determine who, if it goes to a community?
It'll be the sponsor. The person who gets up on it is the sponsor, this piece or her piece.
Then that should be the only person discussing it.
Correct. And we can, I can twi- I can write the exact language to do that. Because it needs to be a rule. So we can't pass this tonight anyway. I would come back with language next, uh, meeting.
Yep.
And that's how we do it, because, and then, because I have to publish it.
So we're gonna be...
I would have referred to me to write the language, so that way I can...
So the motion is refer to, uh, the city clerk to, um...
And I'll work with you, Counsel.
Uh, amend this, and if you need me, I'll come down, I'll speak with you. Amend this piece.
Uh, Counsel Capone? Did you have a question?
Oh, you thought there was his on?
No, no, he, I thought he, I have Counsel Simonelli and then Counsel Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, treat, Mr. President. Treat for Counselman Simonelli. So if there's two sponsors on the bill, they both get to talk, or they don't? Only one?
Yeah, it'd be the only...
Just the sponsors.
Only sponsors. It doesn't mean, if there's one of the three.
If you have three sponsors, all three speak.
Correct.
Counsel McGlaughlin? You, no, no further questions?
Refer to the city clerk, favorable action.
I have two motions on the table. I'm sorry. First, I, I have another person, uh, Mr. Hanlon. Uh, Counsel Hanlon.
Yeah, yeah, um, this has some merit, but you know, it's, it's things that, you know, anything that's new, we have a lot of information coming from his mayor, so maybe the communications for the mayor should not be considered to be placed on the first time. Maybe it should only be things that are, you know, put in motion by a city councilor.
May I?
You know, and, and that would be as new business.
I know I talk a lot, but I actually have a, um, something pertinent to say. So new business never comes from the mayor. New business is only, so our policy is new business is only city council orders.
Okay.
When it's new business from the mayor, it comes under a communication, public hearing, or something like that. So that will never, those will always be separated. It'll never have a, um, a bearing.
Okay, so I have two motions on the table. Uh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, wait a minute.
I have one question on this.
I understand, Counsel, Counsel Hanlon. Okay, go ahead, continue, Counsel.
I thought you were done, because you said call for a question. Um, Madam President?
Yes, Counsel Matusky?
I just wanna bring out, now, we just talked about the Fortunteller. Three councilmen asked a question about it. Okay, I'm just saying, you know? And we did refer it to a committee. So now, when we do something like that, it'll, once you refer it to committee, it ends discussion. When it comes back out of committee, you can talk about it, am I right?
That's correct.
That makes sense, I can deal with that, okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Any, any further speakers? I have two motions on the table. One was to refer back to sponsor, and the other one was refer it to the city clerk.
Neither of them have a second, though.
And neither of them had a second. So the motion is to refer it to the city clerk with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. You're referred to, uh, city clerk.
Thank you. Item... Number 14?
Thirteen, oh, we did 13 already, right? Yep, number 14.
Correct. Item number 14, under unfinished business, is a resolution offered by, uh, Madam Chairperson, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael McGlaughlin, Richard J. Delasola Jr. and Fred Capone that the DPW Director Greg St. Louis and a representative from Encore at, uh, appear at the next Government Operations Committee meeting to discuss the work being done on, uh, on the island across from 66 Main Street. This was a committee report from Government Operations. And, um, the, the recommendation was to report back to the city council with a recommendation to have Mr. St. Louis update the city council at a regular city council meeting on June 24th with a progress report. I do not have anything in front of me, though.
Will he on the table, Madam President?
Madam President?
Wait a minute, I wanna, it's, who has questions? Okay, Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Madam President, I'm just wondering if anybody in the administration has information on this. This is a pretty sensitive time, uh, issue. As my colleagues understand, the summer is upon us and we were hoping to have a remedy to that island in front of 66 Main Street, Everett Villa Co-op. It's the side of the hill, it sweets a circle, so that they could clean it up and make it, uh, better conditions for the residents at Everett Villa Co-op, uh, than it has been for the past few years. In committee, uh, Mr. St. Louis had agreed to work with, um, one of the residents down there, Charles Perry, uh, to be able to come up with some ideas and some concepts to be able to, uh, make that more usable and friendly for the building at Everett Villa Co-op. So I really wanted to see this move forward, um, so that they could become, uh, usable this summer. So I don't know if anybody in the administration has any information, but I'd hate to see this tabled, and then I know later on in the calendar, we have a piece to maybe go on summer recess, so we wouldn't discuss this again until September.
But this, I'm sorry, excuse me, Counsel, this does read to appear at the next government operation.
No, they appeared at the government operation, meaning it came out of that to come back to this meeting.
Right, so when, but the report didn't come out, right? We don't have a report on this. You don't?
He, he, Mr. Clerk already read the report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said you didn't have it. So could we have, uh, could we have the clerk read the report?
All I read was what the motion was, the, what the committee voted to do. I didn't read the whole report. It, it came, it's, uh, the, the, I mean, there was a whole report, but the bottom part, that what you voted on was to refer to this meeting with, to have Mr. St. Louis give you information. I said, no, I do not have any information attached to the piece.
Well, Counsel Capone has a suggestion. Do you mind yielding the floor to him?
Sure, I'll yield to my colleague, sure.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Thank you to my colleague for yielding the floor. As a, as a co-sponsor, I share his concern about the timeframe, especially where there is language on here about, uh, the summer. What I would recommend, if, if the co-sponsor is okay with it, we refer it to, uh, Mr. St. Louis to respond directly to the sponsors.
Right, and write it.
And that way, we can follow it up.
So Counsel McGlaughlin, did you hear what the other, uh, sponsor?
I did, and I'm, and I'm okay, and I'm okay with that.
Are you okay with that?
Sure. And I think Counsel DePiero, um, has a, a good suggestion as well.
I believe that, uh, Counsel DePiero also had his hand up. So I know you yield to Counsel Capone. Are you okay with Counsel DePiero, or would you like to continue?
No, absolutely.
Counsel, uh, DePiero.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, this isn't exactly about the work being done, but more of a suggestion along the lines of beautifying the area down there. Um, yesterday, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. DePerry, who's a, uh, resident of the building at 66 Main Street. And we talked about, uh, potentially using that space as, you know, some kind of mural, or, or something, something beautiful, something pretty to, to beautify the neighborhood. And, uh, there is a young gentleman that I went to high school with that's been looking to do something in the community. Uh, Mr. Souza already has a relationship with that young man, so I'll be speaking to him about that in the future. Uh, I think it's a nice idea, something to beautify that area down there, and I think would be a nice solution to, to brighten it up and, and make it look nice, and something the residents down there would like and appreciate.
Thank you, Counsel. So the recommendation is to refer it to, uh, Greg St. Louis, and with the recommendation that he would, he calls the sponsors with his recommendations.
He directs with the sponsors.
Direct to the sponsors.
Whether in writing or by call.
Whether in writing or by phone call. Counsel McGlaughlin?
Just on that, after we receive that, I just would ask that our clerk or assistant makes that information available to all of our colleagues, because I know that we all can share a common sense of urgency to get the, the area cleaned up for the residents of Everett Villa Co-op. So I just wanna make sure that everybody is informed and on the same page as we may go on summer break, but it's important to all of us, so I wanna make sure that the party is...
So have the, uh...
I'm writing it right now.
A report, uh, shared to all the, issued to all the councils?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 15, Madam Chairperson, is an ordinance offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves an ordinance to regulate outdoor dining permits. This was enrolled on, uh, June 10th, been posted in the paper, and this is for our dayment this evening.
Do I have a motion?
Favorable action.
Do I have, I have a favorable action and second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero. Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marchese.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin. That's okay. Counselor Politano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
And that would be nine yeas, zero nays. You have ordained the ordinance. Item number 16.
I count 10, because I count...
Madam Chairperson, item number 16 is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin that a representative from the mayor's office and the Department of Transportation appear at the next Government Operations Meeting to discuss the repair of a transformer on Crystal Partheer Way. Um, this was another, um, report from Government Ops. Actually, I don't have a government, is this?
Alamo...
Yeah, we did, okay, yes.
Grant a motion to accept the committee report.
No, this one actually, um, didn't go to committee, I'm sorry, because there's no report attached.
So there's no...
Counsel McGlaughlin might have any information.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Counsel, yes, uh, myself and my colleagues are working between the mayor's office and the state to be able to get this issue, uh, rectified, and we decided that we needed a little bit more time to be able to work on this issue than what the committee meeting would be able to prevent, uh, present to us. So we decided that we would table this and continue to work with the Senator, Representative, and the mayor's office to get this issue resolved. So we decided to table this matter, so that we'd have further time to continue to work on it.
So the motion would be, uh, tabled?
For, for the first meeting in September.
Postpone it till September?
So postpone item 16 for the first meeting in September. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, can you read number 17 on the agenda, please?
Item number 17, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City, uh, that, that an ordinance amending Article 4 of Section 17 Newsreel be approved by the Everett City Council. This was enrolled on June 10th, this is for our dayment.
Favorable action.
Is that a second? Second? All in favor?
Uh, there's gonna be roll call.
A roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marchese.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Politano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have so passed the ordinance.
Read number 18 on the agenda, please.
18. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin, Richard J. Delasola Jr., uh, John Leo McKinnon, and Anthony DePiero that the DPW Director Greg St. Louis and a representative from National Grid appear at the next Government Operations Committee meeting to discuss repairs being made to the roadway on the Ferry Street project. There is a Government Operations Committee report here.
You want to read a report?
What do you, uh, you want me to read the whole report or the recommendation? So the, uh, report, uh, Mr. St. Louis, uh, was present, Counsel McGlaughlin declared that the Ferry, Ferry Street was in disarray and mentioned that National Grid tried to make the needed repairs to their trench prior to the strike, but now the condition of the street has left residents and businesses quite concerned. He asked that the city could do the work and back charge National Grid. Mr. St. Louis informed the committee that National Grid was actually still working along Ferry Street near the Malden Line, but acknowledged that the plan was to do, do the city ferry mill work overlay from Glendale Square to the Malden Line after June 10th. Since he, since he concurred, it was a worn corridor in the city. Mr. St. Louis stated that he did not know that, uh, the exact, exact cost of the work at the time. Counsel Delasola asked if patching could be done on the other side of Ferry Street, especially in the Cottage Street area. Mr. St. Louis responded that he had no problem holding National Grid accountable for that work. Counsel Delasola requested that the city provide ample notice to all when the mill work will occur from Glendale Square to the Malden Line on Ferry Street. The committee voted to report back to the city council a recommendation to have Mr. St. Louis update the city council at a regular city council meeting on June 24th with a progress report.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
President, uh, Mr. St. Louis isn't here, okay. I think we were just waiting for a timeline of when this work could be done. I know he had, uh, planned in place, maybe he said it would be a couple of days. It would be the same as the Chelsea Street work and other road work that, major work, road work that had been done, uh, most recently. I mean, we were waiting to get a date for that. Um, I don't know if any of my colleagues that serve on the committee have any other information that can...
I, I've heard nothing on a date.
So, um, I don't know if, again, just concerning by table, I'm not sure what to do with these. If we're gonna go on summer recess, we're gonna lose two months, and then we're into September, into September, and construction season, as we know, is, is now. So I'm not sure what the...
Why don't we, from the gym, could we send a letter to...
Would you like to send it to me, and I'll contact Mr. St. Louis directly and have him contact, either send me a report or, or a letter, or directly contact you?
Sure, that would be great, and I know that he is...
If you refer it to me, I can work with Greg, uh, Mr. St. Louis, I should say.
Yep, that, that would be fun. I know he's usually always accessible, but I want it to be known to everyone on the board, not just one or two colleagues. So, um, that would be good, if you can do that for us.
I can.
Thank you.
You can.
I have a second. Have a second on that?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Read number 19 on the agenda, please.
One second, please. Yes, the President. Sorry. Item, uh... I thought you did. You just let me read it? You can take it back up. So take it back up.
On the motion?
City clerk.
City clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Now, item number 19, um, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin that is honor the mayor and the CFO appear at the next meeting to give an update on any recommendations that have been made from the School Review Commission, and to see if an audit has been done on the school department, and if the Blue Ribbon Commission has been formed to address school funding going forward.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President. Can we ask, make a motion that we invite up, uh, Mr. Demus?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. Demus, good evening.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. Demus, can you, uh, I, I hope that we would be able to get, excuse me, some of this information prior to the budget meeting, as we had discussed, uh, previously. Um, although I think that the budget session went tremendously well, and I think that we are, um, in a great financial direction, uh, with the schools. But is there recommendations? Did, did recommendations come from the Blue Ribbon Commission since the last time we talked, which you were waiting for? There was a rough draft possibly, and you were waiting for that to get into the next phase?
Yes, there, there was a, a draft that we received, uh, last week, um, to make sure, uh, to verify numbers, to verify council orders, timeline, the background. Um, and, uh, I went through, verified all of those numbers. Um, there was questions about FTEs, so a little fine tuning to the report. Um, they will be meeting with the, the task forces meeting with the school committee, uh, I'm sorry, not the school committee, the school administration tomorrow, to review the draft. The purpose of having us take a look at things is to make sure that they're factually correct, both on the city side and the school side, so they're gonna be doing that tomorrow. Um, and then, once they get that complete, I think there's one or two small items that they're still waiting from the, um, school administration on, which should be resolved tomorrow. Um, and after that, they will finalize the report and issue it to the city.
Okay, so could we anticipate seeing that in, over the course of the summer?
Yes.
Okay, would you do us a favor and make sure that we receive a copy of it here in the council office, either in our mailboxes or e- email, whatever is most prudent? I'd be interested in reading those recommendations, and maybe seeing if any of those can be implemented in the next budget, due to the, our fact that our budget season, session is over for this coming year.
Certainly, and I do know, um, that members of the task force would like to make a presentation, um, of their report to talk about the process, um, items and issues that they found, as well as the recommendations that they're gonna be making. They definitely wanna speak on their own behalf and make that presentation to, um, the city council and, um, the school committee in a joint meeting.
Okay, so then should, what would be your suggestion to table this until September and invite, and invite them, or refer this back to sponsor? And then you present that to us? What do you think would be the best prudent way to go forward to be able to do that? With this piece that's still live tonight?
Either or would be fine.
Uh, thank you to our assistant for, uh, that information. Then I am going to make a motion, thank you, Mr. Demus. If none of my colleagues have a question, I will make, uh, excuse my customary...
We have another speaker.
We do, okay.
Any more speakers, Fred, guess? Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. No more questions, Counsel.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I will make a motion that we refer this back to sponsor at this point, understanding that there will be a report coming forward in the summer, and that there will be a joint, you know, convention held, uh, to present it and to show their recommendations, so I'll make a...
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Can you read number 20 on the agenda, please?
Item number 20. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Peter A. Politano as president, be it ordained by the Everett City Council, that Section 3-33, Keeping Hands and Poltry of the Raisin into the City of Everett be amended by deleting the ordinance in its entirety. That is the recommendation both from the Board of Health, myself, and from the Committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections. This is for ordainment, has already been enrolled.
Second.
Council Napolitano? Motion I was gonna make. Able to action. It's in for, it's in, it's already been enrolled, so it's now in for...
I thought you had your hand up.
Yeah, I did, but that's okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Counselor Simonelli.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Della Solar.
Yes.
Ten ye, zero naes, you have ordained the ordinance...
Read number twenty-one on the agenda, please.
Item number twenty-one. It's a petition offered by Council Richard J. Della Solar Jr. as president. That the Everett City Council have approved the fanball registration for DB National Warehouse Supply, Inc. at ninety Tremont Street. Just so you know, the last meeting, I told you that, uh, to hold this over so I could post it for a public hearing, after a little due diligence, I found that there was an existing license on the, on the lot because that is such. The license is always granted in perpetuity until it's revoked, has not been revoked. So, all we have to do is approve it for this new, um, owner. They've already operated in the city, they just moved locations because they were bought out, um, they were in the Encore area across the street and they just moved locations. The license already existed.
What did they do?
DB National.
Counselor Marquesi?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, which I could be, I feel like this is the paint supplier. Am I right? Yeah, they supply paint. They used to be on Robin Street. Do you remember them? Yeah, so they just moved because they were bought.
Okay, no seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero. Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Marquesi.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Della Solar.
Yes.
Ten ye, zero naes, you have passed the license.
Can you read number twenty-two on the agenda, please?
Item number twenty-two, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Stephen Simonelli that the mayor's chief of staff provide an update at the commit, at the next meeting on the sale of Everett Memorial Stadium, as well as the new stadium at Seven Acre Park.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through Councilman Simonelli, could the clerk read the report?
Yes, I may. This is a letter from Mr. Tony Souza. I'm so, I'm sorry, repeat that. It, it is not, it, uh, the letter was sent by Mr. Souza, that's what he's asking to read. Excuse me. Uh, we have been focused on developing conceptual designs for, for this, for the new stadium and recreational center to be integrated at the new Rivers Edge Playground and Parkland. Earlier this month, the City Council authorized appropriated approximately two million to further design, for the further design of the new stadium and recreational center. None of that money has been sent at this time, nor would we spend the funds until there was a consensus regarding the new design and agreement on future reuses of the old stadium site. The only funding being used is approximately fifty thousand for the basic renderings and layout plans, not the full design plans. I anticipate working on concepts for the new facilities over the summer with detailed renderings for the mayor, city council, and public comment. The vision would be to maintain the veterans memorial and honor roll at the corner of the property, upgrade the playground area at Chelsea Street, and create some passive recreational areas. Any sale of the old stadium or a portion of the land will require appraisals, a series of local, state approvals, and extensive public outreach. I would like to continue discussions about this project as we present concepts later this fall.
Thank you.
That's from Director Souza.
Counselor Simonelli, you have any questions on your piece?
We'd like to invite the chief of staff, please.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Uh, good evening all. Kevin O'Donnell, Chief of Staff, Mayor De Maria.
Thanks, Chief. Just a couple of questions on, uh, the stadium. So, the plan is, uh, to sell the land or no?
Well, again, we, we have just a, a lot of conceptuals, but yes, that's what we would likely do in the event that we were to move forward down with the extended redevelopment of the River Green area.
Do you see, uh, any problems in selling it?
Uh, at, at this point, uh, none, none that we are foreseeable that would, would hinder anything like that, no.
Do you think the Wynn Corporation, or have they been involved with this at all?
They haven't been part of our discussions with respect to that piece of land, no.
And now, uh, the new stadium. Did Wynn agree to build that? Oh, sorry, uh, Mr. President, uh, Wynn, did they agree to build the new stadium?
No, they have built, they have built, uh, a portion of that, replacing the old Line Street Park down the River Green District. We, we would just like to kind of e- expand to that to make it all-inclusive, uh, athletic facilities.
And will that, will athletic facility be finished before September?
Well, we, we don't even know if we're going forward with it at this point. As you can tell from the, the communication, there's a lot more moving parts that, uh, have to be determined before we could, uh, go forward with anything. So, this is definitely, uh, in the earliest of its infancy stages in concerns of, of going forward.
So, there's a possibility there could be a hockey rink there or some kinda something else?
Well...
Like a sports complex?
We wanna make it, ultimately, the, the... Even possibly relocating the wellness center down there and have just everything at, at that one general area.
Anything else? No more questions, Mr. President, thank you very much.
I have, Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. Good evening. With regards to the, the concept, it sounded like, from the letter, that, uh, the memorial section in the front would be maintained and then the park, the Taught Lot Park up on Chelsea would be enhanced, but then sell the interior part?
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay, and, um, I mean, that, that memorial stadium is, is very special and there's a lot of tradition, there's a lot of history there. I, I, I don't know what the vision is for the type of sale. I don't know if it's, I know it's in the infancy stage, so really hasn't been a lot of interplay, but before we, we really expended any significant money on, on plans on a redesign, I don't know if there's been any input from the neighborhood there, but I, I would prefer that we do that. And the second thing is, I don't know if there's, um, a preferred type of development to go in there that would still work with maintaining the memorial that's out front. I don't, I don't know if that's been a discussion or if there's any ideas on that.
Well, I, I just will say this much, Council, that the, uh, the memorial is a very near and dear, important piece of, of this whole discussion, uh, every time. I mean, we, uh, there's veterans here on, on, uh, this council. Uh, I don't think there's probably anyone even in this chamber that doesn't have a family member that, that's a veteran, you know, some career veterans. So, that is a, you know, a very important piece of which I'm sure there would be quite a bit. If we were gonna even go forward in any manner with any of this, I'm sure there'd be quite extensive conversations with respect to that.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what type of development might be able to go in there, still maintain the integrity of that? And then you've got the, the memorial and the interior, that, would that be relocated or?
Uh, I mean, anything was possible depending on what, what would, uh, be proposed going forward, but again, right now, that's still, we're, we're still...
Okay. I'm torn.
Not there yet. I, no, I understand. It, it, believe me, we all are, um, not only from, from the memories, uh, on that field and everything, but I, I can't stress enough the want of the veterans piece and the memorial, that's there.
And I know how important that is to the administration and to all of us. So, that's my concern. I just wanna make sure if, if there are some plans to do something with it, my two concerns would be neighborhood input and the second thing would be how to maintain that memorial, what would be able to go in there that would still maintain the significance of all that and not take anything away from that. So, I kinda like the stadium right where it is, but I understand the benefit of having all, uh, you know, sports, recreation activities all in one location somewhere else.
Yeah, I put, you know, one of the particular, uh, common things that comes up during the discussions is, is the relief on the, the abiding neighborhoods.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I mean, I've...
And that's, and that's why they're, yeah, and that's why their input's so important, you know? If you, if you get an overwhelming cry from the neighborhood, you know, enough, we've done this enough years, and that comes into play.
Yeah, there's a lot of variables that contribute here, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. If you have any questions.
Counselor McGlaughlin and Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I was just gonna echo the comments of, uh, Counselor Capone, which is that I'd like to see input from both neighborhoods, both, one, the Cabbage Street neighborhood, but also then down to Tremont Street because you're going to have the new gates at Prescott Street extension, much more usable, uh, which would flood the neighborhood with much more traffic on sporting events and other events that happen at the stadium. I'm definitely torn on the project. Happy to hear the benefit because I think there's a lot to it, but I would definitely like to hear the input on both resident sides and I think the administration would agree with that as well.
You know, oftentimes when there's a benefit, there's somewhat of a burden elsewhere.
You know, so we might be relieve and stress on the Cabbage Street neighborhood and just adding it on to the Tremont Street neighborhood, uh, so, you know, and I, but I think it could be a benefit to both if it's done correctly and done carefully, so...
Methodically, absolutely.
Methodically, absolutely, sure. Uh, so I'd like to see, uh, neighborhood meet it held on both ends of this, um, so that we could hear from both ends of, um, this development before we were...
Yeah, and I don't wanna speak for the planning director, Mr. Souza, but I believe that, I mean, that's normally part of the process where, if we go forward with the proj, projects of this magnitude, that there were, I mean, you've attended some yourself, so...
Yep, absolutely, and I, and you guys are very good at, at holding those neighborhood meetings. I just would like to hear their both sides so that we, uh, can work with them on first and foremost basis of how to be able to integrate this into a new neighborhood and to also make that other site, um, accessible, or acceptable, excuse me, to, uh, to that neighborhood. So, thank you so much.
Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you. First of all, I'm, I am glad to hear that there's gonna be some discussion with the neighborhood. I've represented that area for many years and I know there's a lot of mixed feelings on the Spring Street, on the Cabbage Street side regarding, uh, you know, the stadium itself. So, their input is, is very important. And, um, you know, it is important to maintain the, the memorial down there as a veteran, as a son of a veteran whose name is on that, is on, uh, down that, in that area. My concerns would be though, if, if there were a sale of the property, the logistics of where that is on the corner of the parkway and how the city would be able to maintain it when behind it would be, uh, would be a, a private entity. Is there also some consideration, some discussion about the possibility of, of moving the main components of that memorial and relocating it? Has there been any discussion or consideration in that area?
Uh, we, you know, we reopen to all options of, of what would be the, the best use of it depending on what was proposed for that, for that area.
See, it ties in to the stadium as it stands now. Take the stadium out of there, it's a, it's an isolated island that potentially, under a different administration, on a different, uh, watch, could deteriorate. And we, we don't wanna see, the, the whole idea of that part, of that was it was replacement of a, of a memorial that was, uh, and, that was misplaced when the construction of the city hall was made back in the early sixties. So, again, um, you know, we just wanna make sure that it's given its proper due...
As one assurance, I could make you, I could make you now, Council, that, that, that city would make that a, it's utmost priority to maintain and care for that memorial in perpetuity.
Well, I, I'm not concerned that the city, that the city as stands today would, would do anything less, uh, but I just wanna make sure that there's discussion. I'm really glad you did that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean...
You know, it's a phenomenal piece. Uh, I have relatives outside of the, outside of the state. When they visit, they make a point to go down there. I mean, I, I, I know my, my father's names on there. There are dozens of my father's friends who served with him in World War Two that are there as well. There are members in this, there were former members of this board and this council that's na, whose names are down there, uh, who served. So, uh, but I would be concerned about its isolation if the sa, the stadium was sold and how the city would be maintaining it, so I, I think some, some discussion...
Well, those are things that we could also have, a- as things start to evolve, like discussions, uh, to continue on that as well, because I, I wouldn't want it to be just like, oh, remember what used to be there, or, or where is it?
That's, that would be my concern.
Yeah, exactly, no, I...
You know, there was a lot of money spent to construct that. It came out much, much better than I, anybody ever imagined and, uh, it, it's, it is a, a, a nice addition to the stadium, but without the stadium, you know, we, we really need to give it its due.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guests. You know, originally, uh, seeing some social media feedback and whatnot over the last week or so, I was, you know, on the same boat of maintaining that, uh, memorial in its current location and making sure it stays there. But, you know, listening to Counselor Napolitano and, and, you know, looking at what the vision is for the Route sixteen area and whatnot, it's a great location, but with development and it would look great to the traffic driving by and all that, but when we get to a point, how much foot traffic would actually be able to access it, uh, if it stays there? And, you know, like you said, I wanna make sure it gets its due and if it just looks beautiful and everyone drives by it, but you don't walk up and see a name, what good is it in that location?
No, I was gonna say, it loses some intimacy.
Exactly, exactly. We, we want people to see it and want people to...
Right.
You know, be attracted to it, so just take that into consideration.
No, those are all things that's considered, that's why we're so conservative fiscally with the initial design proposals and, you know, the renderings and stuff like that. I mean, you know, we could receive the rendering and say, this, this isn't remotely what we wanted and, you know, discard and have the discussions going later, but, um, you know, the, these are all valid points that all have been and will continue to be taken into consideration.
Great, great, and as far as the project itself, um, the idea of the sports complex down on, on that area of Everett that's been revitalized along the river, draw people there, uh, provide some great amenities to our, our kids and our families in the city. Um, you know, change is inevitable and, and people, you know, don't like two things, change in the way things are. So, you know, we gotta find common ground and, and move the city forward and keep the progress going, but thank you.
Counselor Simonelli?
Thank you, Mr. Ch, Mr. President. Through you for Councilman Simonelli. Uh, excuse the chief with the customary thanks.
I, I just have a question from the chair, if, uh, Council don't mind. Okay. Counsel Simonelli, you all set?
Motion to have a written update at our second meeting.
You all set? Okay, I, I just have a question from the chair.
I'm sorry.
Um, it's a touchy subject for everybody, the stadium. My question, like, social media, you know how it is. Stadium is there right now on Seven Acres Park, Seven Acre Park, is not the new Everett Stadium, correct?
No, no, it's a replacement playground for, uh, the, the Line Street Park.
Correct. I'm just old school. Everett Stadium to me is like family park. So, I love to see, we deserve, the sports in Everett are great, we deserve the top of the line, sports facility, but what's gonna go there is all of our concern, so...
Oh, I understand. Hey, aside from the council and the mayor, my mother grew up on Ca, spent her first twenty-five years on Cabbage Street, so I have to answer to her as well with respect to the stadium, so...
We had so many famous people play on that field and, uh, my uncle itself, so it's just, it's a touchy, it's a touchy subject for everybody, but that's...
Oh, understood, oh, understood.
Thank you very much. Uh, Council, what do you wanna do on this piece?
Motion to have a, um, written update at our, at our second meeting in September.
Second motion?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Read number twenty-three on the agenda, please. No rush, clerk.
Item number twenty-three, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Stephen Simonelli that the mayor's chief of staff appear at the next meeting to give an update on the progress of Saint Teresa's property for the housing, for housing as requested by residents.
Counselor Simonelli?
Thank you, Mr. Pres, Councilman Simonelli, could the clerk read the memo, please?
Yes, I may. This is again from, it's from, uh, Mr. O'Donnell. Uh, the neighborhood developer's applied in February to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for the federal and state funding that is needed in order to finance construction and keep rents restricted. This application was the second time that the neighborhood developer submitted an application to DHCD for the Saint Teresa's property. DHCD considers application for affordable housing throughout, throughout Massachusetts, the process is very competitive. Governor Baker and DHCD are expected to hold a press conference at some point in July to announce the, which developments will have their financing approved. If Saint Teresa's is one of the developments approved, the neighborhood developers will begin construction during the first quarter of twenty-twenty. The neighborhood developers will market the availability of apartments beginning in the fall or winter of twenty-twenty. Construction will be complete in mid-twenty-twenty-one. If Saint Teresa's property is not one of the developments approved, the project's timeline is delayed by about one year. If you need any basic project details, there are seventy-seven rental homes with an average, with an age restriction of sixty-two years or older. There will be health care and social program on the ground floor called Program for All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly. There are six townhouses for seal for people of any age. You're welcome.
Counselor Simonelli?
So, they're gonna build seventy-seven units, seventy-seven rental homes?
Counsel, make, the microphone, please.
So, chief, they're building seventy-seven rental units?
That's correct.
Seventy-seven.[1667.14] And do they have a buyer? Do they have a buyer for those units yet?
Well, no, they advertise through a lottery system, a certain percentage guaranteed to Everett residents.
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I could get you that information.
I hope it's 90 percent.
It's a high, it's not 90, but it's a high number.
Okay, good, good. Do you know, like, some idea when the construction may start?
Well, the governor's got to announce who was awarded these. We anticipate within the next three weeks. And then, once they've been, if they are one of the companies that received that funding, they'll start, as it says, they'll start the construction during the first quarter of 2020. You'd probably surprise them in the spring of 2020.
So then it would be finished in '22?
2021.
In '21?
Yeah.
And, so the housing for the elderly, you have to be 62 years or older? When it says elderly housing, you have to be 62 years or older?
Yes, correct.
You can't be 59 and a half.
No.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I understand how utterly important this development is to the city of Everett. Just happened to notice last week they had a landscaping crew over there maintaining the land and keeping it orderly. I'm wondering if there were to be a community, and Mr. O'Donnell, look for your recommendation on this, if there were to be a communication from this council to the governor's office to stress how important this development is to the city of Everett and the need in the affordable housing element in the community. Is that something that you think would be helpful, just to let them hear our voice, that we support this project moving forward? Has the mayor sent that letter? I'm just wondering if...
Yes, there have been prior communications sent before what they had mentioned in this communication. So I would actually probably defer to Catherine Rollins on that, but I could get, make sure she gets word back through the entire council with her thoughts on that because she has been, had more direct contact with the neighborhood developers on this. This has been kind of her, she's been working in conjunction with them in its infancy. And I know, you know, Senator D. DeVineco was part of some of these conversations along with Representative Bill Garnigal and the mayor for all of these. That being said, in speaking with Catherine this afternoon, she does feel very confident that, you know, groups such as this have been, have a proven track record over the years for the success of their development. So if this group in and of themselves is very confident that they will be one of the awardees at this point.
That's great, because I know the good work that they do in surrounding communities. I know the developers from Chelsea and I know the developments that they've done in the greater Boston area and what they have done in other communities is churn communities around for their elderly folks.
Yeah, and that's why, that's what gives them the confidence that we just spoke of.
Okay, so I would like to hear from Catherine, her recommendation, because I do think that as much as it is looking positive, I don't think a communication from this council could hurt just saying that we as a city council support this development, understand how important this would be for our senior community. So I'd like to hear that from Catherine and then I will work with Mr. Mangan on talking to my colleagues and asking if we could do that, just to send a communication, just as a recommendation that we would be in favor of this project moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not to take up any more time, but very happy to hear that this is moving forward, hopefully sooner than later, it's desperately needed. In the past, I did supply some letters on behalf, being the ward representative, the gentleman that works, I think you've met him, Councilor McGlaughlin, is Aaron Wasserman. They, you know, draft a letter with the details that need to be included in it, certain specifics of the project. So I'll provide Mr. Mangan with Mr. Wasserman's information and get that letter as soon as possible that our colleagues agree to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for our guests?
Actually, I have a copy on my desk. I can just, again, it's from Mr. Mangan, first thing in the morning, off this evening.
Counselor Seminelli.
Motion to have a written update at our second meeting in September.
Second motion?
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Counselor, when you, City Clerk, when you are ready, number 24, please.
Well, item number 24 is an order offered by Councilor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby suspends the council meetings for the months of July and August. If any piece of business comes up during the summer that needs to be addressed, then the president can call a special meeting of the city council.
Roll call vote?
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counselor de Florio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezey.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli. And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays. You have so passed the order.
Number 25 on the agenda, please.
Number 25, the resolution offered, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Lee McKinnon that the city consider going to a citywide 24/7 residential parking, adding the weekend to the current wording of the ordinance. This would hopefully stop the parking that will be introduced into the city due to overflow from visitors from the casino.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. The sponsor, as you know, and you mentioned earlier, had a family commitment. He did ask me to speak on his behalf on this piece. As we saw, traffic actually worked pretty well for the opening, which was nice. But one thing that the residents have seen, and it's a topic that's been discussed up here before by many of our members, is that we do see people who are traveling to work, parking on our side streets. And I think it's not too much of a stretch to anticipate that folks will be parking on the side streets to go down to the casino, pick up the shuttle and go from there. So the concern is we want to make sure that that's not happening in the residential areas. It'll be a little trickier in the commercial areas, we'll have to figure out what to do with that, but looking to go to a 24/7 residential parking in the residential areas. The sponsor has asked that this piece be referred to the Committee on Business and Community Development, because he's a member of that committee. I'll make that motion.
On the motion, I got two speakers, Counselor McGlaughlin and Counselor Marquezey.
I was going to echo the comments of Counselor Capone that yesterday, at opening day, I know it was only one of many days, target dates that you have to look at with traffic and parking, but it went smooth. And I think that there is a need for it in certain areas. I'd be concerned, would it be in citywide? But I think that this is needed, and I know that we've talked about it in depth, and we were going to revisit this after the opening happened. So I'm not sure what differs this piece from the piece that we've had before us for a significant amount of time, but I'm more than happy to send it along. I'm just not sure what makes the city more concerned than the immediate circumference of the casino area, which is Ward 1 and 6, which we've been talking about here for almost a year in these chambers. Thank you.
Counselor Marquezey.
Yes. The 24/7 thing, it may be hidden in deep residential areas, it's good, but anything that's near with his business, we, you know, putting bike racks taking away three, four spots in businesses, which is crazy, I can't believe what I'm saying, but we're killing the small business. If you're going to do anything like that, if you're going to do something on Main Street, the streets should be reconfigured where maybe the bus stops should be reduced, and they should be reduced to the nearest fire hydrants. So, you know, there's already no parking there. Increase the parking, maybe put the meters there, put meters there, but only, maybe enforceable only to people who don't live there. You know what I'm saying? Maybe you could, the same people going to park there anyhow, don't force it on the people with this, they don't have a residence sticker, enforce it. And enforce it all night long for people who don't have stickers. That'd be the only area I'd say to enforce the meters all night long, you know? At least it would be some revenue, tickets or whatever, but people who are going to park on Main Street who don't have stickers for a certain amount of time. You could, you know, work that area and you can maximize the parking there. I mean, it doesn't have to have bus stops and fire hydrants, you can have the bus stops around the fire hydrants, I believe, I don't know if it's legal, but you can't park there anyhow, why not utilize the buses and do that? You probably pick up 50 spots, put the meters there, let the people in the city of Everett, you don't have to ticket the Everett people, you know? But if they're, you know, not in the city of Everett, you ticket them. But you ticket them all night long too now, because that area's in play now with the casino. It's something to think about, you know, something to do. You can't put the people out of business, you know, so... I mean, you've got to stop, if I want to go to Continental Baker and live in the city of Everett, there still has to be a place to stop, you know?
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Hamlin and Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I kind of have a problem with this. You know, I've been hearing all kinds of problems that we have now down in the area across the bridge of parking problems that are down there, people that own property down there that have got to come and fix it and so on and so forth. You know, you have people that own rental apartments, you have a bathroom overflow, they can't wait for three days or something, they need someone there at 2:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the morning, whatever it is. But the other thing that bothers me here is the 24/7. I just quickly just figured out, it didn't take me for five seconds, I have eight people that drop in the city all the time, they don't live in Everett, and they're family members, they're my family members, you know? And they drop in all the time. And I have other people that live in the house that have friends visiting them in the daytime. No one stays over. Occasionally, my son does, but I usually park out in the stray heat pots in the driveway. But that 24/7 gives me a big problem. I know that there are people coming to the resort that are going to be down there 24 hours a day or whenever they come and they go home, but still, that doesn't mean that we have to just provide parking for everybody that wants to go to the resort. We have to come up with some other kind of solution. Whatever the solution is, I hope we, you know, get our traffic department involved in this too, because they know what's going on down there now. And by the way, I was down there Sunday, there was no traffic. No traffic in the morning, no traffic in the afternoon, and no traffic at night. And I know they thanked everybody for taking public transportation, but then I was wondering where were they parking if they didn't take public transportation? But I didn't hear any human cry from everybody in the city of Everett saying, geez, someone was parked in front of my house for six hours, and they came and they walked up the street. I didn't hear any of that, so you have to really think about what's going on with this situation before we go out going crazy, taking all kinds of rules and regulations that we really don't need and don't want. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DePiero and Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, in response to Counselor Marquezey, that's great, bus stops and hydrants. I don't know why no one's ever thought of that. I don't know if we can do it.
Yeah.
Can't do it, but of course, red tape everywhere. But everything has pros and cons. My initial concern with the 24/7 resident parking, when it was brought up by Counselor McGlaughlin, was the small businesses, the restaurants, the funeral homes, the convenience stores, the barrooms, whatever they may be. And I think it needs to be fine-tuned, but that meter idea could potentially solve it where the meter was just utilized by folks that don't have the Everett sticker. And that could be kind of a happy medium for all.
Yep.
So hopefully, we can all work together on this and make sure we protect our residents and businesses at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Napolitano.
I mean, I concur. We've been talking about this all year, we've been talking about the impact. You know, our main goal has been to make sure the traffic was aware of the potential issues that could face us. You know, we've been concerned about a rolling wave of people parking on neighborhood streets. Well, based on the reports we got from the traffic department, I mean, I think they're on top of it. Looking at the results that we saw on Sunday, clearly people do listen when they're being, when it's being recommended to take public transportation. You know, this is, I think, is a little premature. There has not been enough time to be able to evaluate any of the traffic data. We don't know what next weekend's going to be like. We've got one day. We had opening day where people were strongly encouraged to take public transportation. Now, next weekend, when it's open for a full weekend, it may be a whole different ballgame. We don't know this. But let's not jump the gun here. You know, yes, I'm very concerned about cars parking in our neighborhoods. You know, graduation night, I live three, four blocks from the stadium, cars were backed up up to High Street. You know, there were people parking on Cottage Street where I live. It's a four-block walk to the stadium. They're there, and that's just one night. But that doesn't mean that this is going to, that this is going to impact us on a regular basis, and it does impact our small business community. You know, restaurants, you know, various businesses that go in. You mentioned the funeral homes. Didn't even consider that. How difficult is it to go, find a parking space when you go to a funeral, especially with some, a popular Everett resident? You know, so, yeah, we've got to show a little bit of restraint here. I think we've, our voice has been heard. Let's let traffic get some data so they can determine what they're going to do. The administration already made it clear, they've got, they've got things in place, they can make the moves if they need to. We got a report about what's going on down on Lewis Street, Paris and Bailey. They had Lewis Street covered. They didn't consider Paris and Bailey. They're putting those signs up, you know, discouraging encore parking down there now. So, I mean, let's give them a chance. This is an overwhelming situation, and to be honest with you, I think they did a heck of a job yesterday managing the traffic flow. The Everett Police was out there, the state police was out there. You know, we had no problem getting down there, we had no problem getting back, barring where we got dropped off, but that's another story.
Correct. That's another story.
We'll address that on another level. But let's get this, let's watch and see what happens here. If they're ready to act on it, then they'll make the adjustments. If problems happen and we don't see the adjustment, we know the process to call special meetings so we can get the attention done. And, but let's not jump the gun. One day doesn't warrant a citywide, you know, residential parking issue, especially when we're not sure how much it's going to impact some of our businesses.
Thank you. Counselor de Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a piece that coincides with another piece that's on here. And I believe at that time, Counselor McGlaughlin had something on, and we said, why are we fixing something that's not broken yet? Let's wait until we see what happens. And when you do 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you better watch what you're doing, because I don't know about anybody else here, my kids live outside the city, and my kids are entitled to come and see me and my grandkids. Granted, I have a big driveway, they don't park out in the street. I'm talking about everybody else in the city. They have children that don't live in the city, you're going to tell them 24/7 they can't have a Sunday dinner to come over here to visit their parents? What if they're having a communion party? What if they're having a birthday party? So there's a lot of things to take into consideration. So my recommendation is that I can just lay it over until the first week of September when we meet and have the sponsor come over here and see what he wants to do with this, because it's the same thing we already have on the books.
Thank you.
Postponed until the first in September.
On the motion?
I don't know, I think we had a second on yours, Mr. President.
We had a second?
In all fairness, I don't want to speak for the... His name should be added to it as well.
Well, council has something in September, right? Is that your piece?
Was it referred back to sponsor or was...
I believe my piece was held over until September so that we could get the data properly to be able to determine.
Thank you, Counsel.
Yeah, so put it together with it, yeah. No, let me throw it back to sponsor.
On the motion, hold it over until September?
Could we, one second, sorry. I know you made a motion, I believe, there was no second. Okay, I just want to make sure we did it right, that's all. So it's postponed?
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, you're ready, read number 26 on the agenda, please.
Item number 26, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John F. Hallen that ECTV investigate and recommend a new public address system for the city council chambers.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, I really don't make much noise about that up here and everything in it. You know, two meetings ago, while the meeting was going on, because I, you know, I never leave the chamber, hardly ever, and I went in the back room, there were some guests here, the council was speaking, and the back room TV, it was like a real public address system. You could hear every single word that was spoken. Out here, you can't hear it. You know, whether a person turns their head from the microphone, that picks it up, but it doesn't get picked up out here. So I'm asking that these things be moved somehow, and I don't know what to suggest to be changed, but it's just terrible that we can't, we can't turn and speak to the people that we're talking to, you know? We have to duck down and look over here and then make sure that this thing is in our mouth that's by the side of us. It's not fair to us to do this and try to make sure that we're saying the right words to the people, even listening to what the people are saying. They may be saying something, you say, oh, I don't like that. But it may be something you like, you don't know.
Maybe do we realign our seating here? So that's a possibility?
So...
So I would like to really have the ECTV people look into it. You know, they get the knowledge and they know what they can do down there, but it really needs something, has to be done up here. Thank you.
Before I go to Counselor Matuski?
Just so you know, ECTV was down here last week, starting to look at it, because they've been getting some complaints from the residents at home also. So I want you to know they are looking into it already. You can refer to them, but I did, I want you to know they've been kind of proactive. We had discussed this a while back, and they were down here checking the mic system. Also, that other tablet system will be in effect soon, where at least the residents at home will be able to see how you voted.
soon, where at least the residents at home will be able to see how you voted. So, at least there's some information that'll be transferred, transferred over to the TV. But I just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you.
Motion referred to ECTV.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have two speakers. Councilor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know. I've noticed over the last year or so that if you put Channel 13 on, it's static. I don't know if it's viewer suppression or what it is, but I don't know. Am I the only one that watches? Is it my TV? It's not my TV. It's everybody's TV. You put the channel on, you can't hear anybody talking, you hear static. Now, why is that happening? It's not happening at a regular meeting. It's when they replay it. So, I don't, I don't know what, where the problem is there. You know, I had suggested in the past to put some music in the background like they used to do, the soft music that people enjoyed. They'd actually watch that channel more if they had nice music. And they don't do that anymore, but that's okay. But let's get rid of the static. You put Channel 13 on to view public announcements, all you hear is, you know, you're going to turn the volume up. And then you watch a meeting and it's static. Has anybody else experienced that? Oh, wrote Council DeFlorio. So, I, you know, I don't want it just to be me and my TV, okay?
I don't watch the meetings.
I mean, come on. Let's be real here. Every cable TV, fix the channel, put some music on there, make it appelli. Do the right thing.
Councilor DePereaux?
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to Councilor Matusky, I know there was some issues with the server that have just been fixed. So, hopefully, that issue's over with. We'll find out after tonight, though. But piggybacking off Councilor Hanlon, if we're going to do, make some improvements, let's do it once. Let's do it right. A lot of us have been talking and agree that just the configuration of our desk in this room doesn't work. You know, the way we turn and all that?
That's, that's what I want.
I think Revere has a perfect model where it's almost a horseshoe. Everyone sits along each other, face the crowd. There's a table. When people come to us and petition us, they sit in front of us. You know, perhaps we could, there's some time over the summer where this room won't be being used, and we can get the ball rolling right away. But kind of do it once. Let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
I would ask the council to maybe send that to me at some point, so maybe I could do some legwork to see the cost, because it is something that we had talked about in the past. And the configuration is you're looking at each other instead of the residents. And most other communities, this is one of the only ones where you're set up this way. It used to be, in every other community, it's like a horseshoe or a line this way so you can see the residents, because you're not supposed to be talking to each other anyway. You're supposed to be talking to the president and looking at the residents. So, and I think that would help, I think, make it a lot easier for us. But it's just a recommendation at some point down the, down the road. I mean, I can always just do a cost analysis.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Hanlon?
Well, the clerk said was, 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 was positive. And, and I know, he knows a lot of other clerks, a lot of city clerks. And we must be able to contact, you must be able to contact them.
Yeah.
See, here I am turning around again.
Yeah.
You must be able to contact them and, and find out who has, who's not set up.
I've been to the city halls. I've actually gone and I talked to some of them about other issues. And I go and visit their chambers. So, I've seen a lot. Reuben and Revere definitely have the, one of the best models I've seen, where it's either horseshoe or straight across. And it just seems like it works a lot better. And you're looking at the residents. You're supposed to be out there looking at the residents. Instead, you're looking at each other and then have to turn sideways. It's uncomfortable, you know? So, just a recommendation.
Hold it. I'm next.
Councilman Semenelli?
Mr. President, I tried to do this the first time I came here. And this is how you look at the audience, and this is how you look at the, at the president. Somewhere along the line, when you did the charter, you said, "Sit down." And you stifled yourselves. But if you stand up, each and every one of us, you can see the president, you can see the crowd, you can see the people. There's no major $50,000 for new information. The other city clerk we can hear through these microphones. The regular old microphone worked well, and standing up gives you an ability to see your constituents and is honored the president.
Councilor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Councilman Semenelli's translator exactly what I was going to say. I've spoken to several councilmen here, and I think the majority of us would prefer to stand up. I don't know where it's written that we sit down.
It's not written down.
I think that it, it's very important. I think it's very important, and I think we should have the clerk. Now, I don't know how far this microphone goes, but you can't, this is going to go to here. It's a little uncomfortable. But this would have to be readjusted. I prefer to stand, and I, you know, it just makes more sense to me. The viewing public will know who speaks. Some people don't know who's speaking. And I, I think that we better look at that, Mr. President. You are the president. Now, I don't know what the bodies wishes are here, but I really think we should go back to standing. I know Councilor McKinnon, he's not here tonight, but he told me that he, he would like to do that also. So, you are the president. And Councilman Hanlon, it just makes sense. It really does. And I would like to see us all stand when we speak. And that way, even if the camera's not on you, you know who's speaking. Well, you can hear your person's voice. And maybe these aren't the best microphones either. I don't know. Thank you.
If we all want, if we all want to change, well, we could maybe look at that for the, the break. Thank you. Councilor Capone?
Just on that point, Mr. President, I don't think there's anything written anywhere that says you can't stand. So, I think it's up to the individual member. If the member wishes to stand, I, I think that they're more than welcome to. If they want to do it from the seated position, that's fine, too.
Correct. Thank you. There's no more speakers? Council Hanlon?
Right?
Seconded? Tell second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
I'm on the floor.
Read number 27, please.
Verification on what we just did. Does that mean if I stood up right now for Councilman Semenelli, would I be out of order?
Nope.
As long as your microphone reach up to you so we could hear you on the other?
Well, I'm sure than Councilman Matusky said there's no problem.
It's an inch or two.
Thank you. All right, go, go on to 27, please.
Exactly. Mr. President, number 27 is a resolution offered by Councilor Anthony DePereaux that the Department of Planning and Development look into the safety measures that could be implemented and take action in the area between Abbott Ave. and Freeman Ave. as there have been multiple car accidents over the past few months.
Councilor DePereaux?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer to the Department of Planning and Development. There have been some issues there. You know, everyone's a traffic expert, so I want to hear what they have to say. I put this on about a year ago. Not much was done, and there's been several accidents since then. So, I'm looking for action, and I want to hear back from those folks. First meeting in September.
On the motion, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Read number 28, please, on the agenda.
Mr. President, item number 28 is a resolution offered by Councilor Anthony DePereaux and Councilor John Leo McKinnon that the slowdown signs on St. Street be replaced and a speed monitor be added at the request of the neighborhood.
Councilor DePereaux?
This is more in the neighborhood, down closer to Dairy Maid. It's kind of a Speedway these days. The signs have faded. A lot of children and families in that neighborhood. I'd like the signs to be replaced, and perhaps the speed monitor would help reduce speed. I'm not sure. Does this get sent to the sign department or planning or both?
Sign would be DPW, and the, the, the speed sign would be the police department. Well, traffic, the police department, but the traffic officer there. Mr. Gaff.
So, I'd like to refer to the traffic office and the sign department for immediate action.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Look, when you're ready, can you read number 29, please?
Okay. Item number 29, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne Matusky that the police traffic department place an officer at the intersection of Main and Towson Street at peak traffic hours to assist moving along vehicles.
Councilor Matusky?
Got to make sure, I gotta get used to this. But it doesn't reach all the way, as Councilman Sigh said. Somebody's course aren't long enough. But I prefer to stand. And this issue, Mr. President, was brought to my atta, well, I actually got caught in it. I was on Towson Street, and you could not get out of there. And the traffic was back to Teddy, Teddy Peanut Butter, from Main Street all the way back. Now, I get calls from friends of mine on Towson Street, residents that called me, that they couldn't get out of their, their driveway to move their car. So, as I got closer to Main Street, there should have been a police officer here, because it was, it was unsafe condition for the neighborhood and for the people in traffic. One or two cars would go through that light. You couldn't take a right, because you know the rotary was jammed. And you couldn't take a left, because the people that are coming across on Oak Street, yes, thank you, Councilman, on Oak Street would not let you go. They want to go straight. And they're not letting anybody go. And so, needless to say, I don't know whether it's because of the schoolchildren getting out at early in the morning, dropping the kids off. But I did have a chance to talk to Sergeant Gaff on the traffic division, and he told me there's work being done on Air Force Road. They're widening it to make it two lanes, a wider lane.
Yes.
So, you know, that could have been the issue. But, you know, this has nothing to do with the casino. The casino wasn't even open at the time. So, this is something that just started to happen here. You've got to be able to move traffic along. And I really believe that a police officer should be there at this spot. I mean, I've seen them at different locations, and they're not as needed as much as, I mean, nobody's letting people go by coming out of Towson. It's dangerous. It's unsafe. And the residents that live there, if they had to get out of their parking lot, they couldn't, to go to work or whatever it is. This might be resolved, Sergeant Gaff said, due to some work that's being done down there. But we can't have this happen to those people and to the people that are waiting in line. Two or three cars, come on. If one car went by as the light turned, one single car. But everybody come out of Oak Street, barreling through, you know? Oak Street's very busy, too. So, you know, we need, so my suggestion here is to send this to Sergeant Gaff. He said that he would put a police detail during the rush hours at those times and maybe help out. And maybe this will resolve itself. But this had nothing to do with the casino. I just want to mention that also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor, just from the chair, what's going on is the road between Air Force Road and Tremont Street, they're cut through. It's totally shut down. If someone could help me take another week or so, it'll be complete. I think that's the big, big problem. I cut that way, and I can't go down that way. So, now I'm going Towson, left on Main, and to visit my parents, and it takes you an extra 25 minutes.
Well, that is why we need a police officer. See, there's so much construction going on. You've got to put the police officer where he's actually needed, not, not digging a hole. You need him where the traffic light is.
Yep.
To move cows along. And that's the whole idea of this. So, I appreciate the information, though. I think you're right about that. But...
Thank you very much.
I will tell.
I have Councilor McLaughlin and Councilor Hanlon.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. I echo the comments of Councilor Matusky. But what I have noticed, because I've been looking at this with some residents contacting me, as well as the charter school on Plymouth Street, has been a major issue to that neighborhood. So, to put a police officer at that intersection at peak hours isn't really as beneficial as if you pick odd hours when children are coming and going from the school. So, that would be a much-needed asset, because that is causing a major backup on Towson Street, and then it's clogging the whole entire village. All the side streets become a parking lot at that point. And it's when the kids are coming and going from school, seems to be the worst time of the day. And you're right, Councilor, with the Prescott Street extension closing has just added to additional. And I think it may get worse now that there's a 640-car parking lot on River Green Drive. That's additional 600 cars that are going to go down there. So, I think having a police detail for a while to be able to sort this out would be helpful. But I'm not sure the ordinary peak hours is the right time, only because it seems to be at odd times when, when this backup is happening, more so what the charter school impact to the village. So, but I think it's a great idea. I just think the, the times is something that we could work on with Sergeant Gaff to be able to pick the right hours. You obviously can't have one there 24 hours a day, but I think certain hours would be beneficial to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hanlon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed, I, I live right there, and I see all this, these traffic problems that we have and everything, you know? But, you know, when you really think about it and, and face it, you know, Fremont Street should be closed all the time, because that's what it was. So, we can't say that the traffic problem is because that's open, although that helps a lot. You know, I mean, I'm glad that's going to open up. But the traffic problem that we have is people from other cities. I mean, every time, like Monday morning especially, every Monday morning when I, when I go out, because it's rubbish day and I'm going to bring in my barrels, I stay in there and I count the cars. And I count how many are Everett residents and how many are not. Now, the ones I'm counting are the stickers, that, you know, the parking stickers. Now, I know some people in that area especially, there's not many of them that do not have stickers. Someplace else in Everett, people tend to not get a sticker, because they're the only car, and they park in their driveway, so they don't need a sticker. So, but I, I don't know how to curb that. I know Revere Beach Parkway is filled with people from Revere and from Saguas. They're coming down to, to avoid the bridge. And the same thing on the way home. But it's, it's, I don't know where the solution is. Traffic has improved this week. I mean, we, it's a little bit better. And I'm on Towson Street all the time. We have a, we have a funny turn there, coming off of Main Street, going on Towson Street. The street's not exactly square. You know, you have to do an extra wide turn and cut back in. And if you look at the stop sign, the stop sign is about 40 feet back from the corner. And if people pull up, which they do all the time, right to the light, the people taking a right from Main Street onto Towson Street can't make the turn, because they can't get that swing in there. So, that's another, another place where it bottles up. So, we need someone to do something on the traffic condition that's down there, and maybe redesign or something. Maybe time the lights differently. Maybe put them on some other way, you know, one lane go at a time and not, not put this crossover traffic. That might work, too. So, whatever it is that works, I'm sure we'd all be willing to see it happen and let it happen. And if we do anything with this, I want to make sure that Mr. Gaff also gets a copy of our, our request, because he's pretty good at this traffic stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more questions? Councilor Matusky, what is your pleasure with this piece?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer this to Sergeant Gaff in the traffic department to, I did speak with him just a few days ago, and he said he would put a detail here at this location until things get resolved. So, refer it to him and take immediate action. Thank you.
On the motion, Councilor McIsie?
On the, on the motion, how many people in the traffic commission, traffic department? No, traffic department, like, I mean, is there like four in each, each?
Let me ask the clerk if he can answer that question.
I didn't hear that question.
How many people in the tra, in traffic?
Oh, on the commission?
The traffic division for the city. No, the traffic division for the city.
The police.
Police.
The actual police side. It could be six or eight.
Is that for each, you know, each shift?
No, I, I, no, the, there's, they're mostly patrolmen. You have a sergeant that runs the division, which is Sergeant Gaff. And then he has five or six officers. I mean, you know, Matty Cunningham and those guys. So, I think there's six or seven patrolmen underneath them.
And they doing traffic control, right?
Yep. And they, they have staggered shifts. That way, you can do, there's some on the day, some on the night, because traffic, you know?
Well, you should move a lot of them to the, you should move a lot of them to the day.
So, and they work different shifts during the week.
A lot of direct traffic.
Yeah. And I, I know they do that a little. I don't know to what extent. But that's what they, that's part of their, their policy. And there's about six or seven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor McLaughlin?
I just wanted to say, and it just today, seeing the car, the police down at the rotary and the state police that were there today, traffic never moves smoother in that area today than it did this morning and throughout the whole course of the day. And even yesterday, there was some congestion in the late part of the afternoon yesterday on Lower Broadway, and they moved the people along. And then today on Main Street, it was like a whole entire different place. Traffic moved without a problem this morning. Rush hour commute, it moved along. So, it showed if you have a police officer there, they can move the cars along. It was really something to see this morning, and I hope to continue to watch that this week. But it was a totally different area. So, I think police officer makes it make big difference.
I'm going to get you the exact number of how many officers, okay? I'll just give it to you once I find out.
There's no more speakers? Councilor Matusky?
Just refer it to Everett Police Department, care of Sergeant Gaff. Thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Item number 30.
Item 30, please.
Mr. President, item 30 is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael J. McLaughlin that the police chief, Stephen Maisy Pierre, at the first meeting in September to discuss the recent arrest of gang members in the past three months and to provide specifics of each incident.
Councilor McLaughlin?
Mr. President, can we make a motion to actually refer this to the first Government Operations Public Safety Public Service Committee meeting? As I've been traveling throughout the streets the last few weeks, I've been hearing of different incidents throughout the whole entire community. And I'm wondering which ones are somewhat related to each other, and if it's just one group of individuals that are causing chaos and mayhem on some of our streets, or if it's small pockets of problems throughout. But I've been hearing it across the city. So, I'd like to refer this to Government Operations and ask that Chief Maisy come up and talk to us about these, these issues, and whether or not they are, if they know whether or not they're related, or if it's, if it's isolated area or, I'm not really sure how it works, to be honest. And I'm not even sure they know how it works. But I, I would like to refer this to them, and maybe we can get some answers for the residents. Oh, yeah, the floor, my colleague.
On the motion, Councilor Florio?
Well, we don't know when the next Government Operations meeting is going to be scheduled. My recommendation is that we postpone it to the first meeting in September with the, with the, our recommendation to refer it to Government Operations.
Have the motion.
That's okay with the, with the sponsor?
Councilor Hanlon?
But the Government Operations now, you know, because we're going to work over the summer.
Right.
You know, committee meetings go, they're not.
We're doing it now, whenever it is, it is.
Well, the chairperson of the committee can schedule anytime.
So, they can still schedule?
Oh, yes, they can.
Okay, that's fine. I'll, I'll take my motion back.
That's a weird.
Yep. It's went to Government Operations.
Government Operations. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Aye.
Read number 31 on the agenda, please.
Item number 31, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Rosa DeFlorio that is on to the mayor, look into the feasibility of putting a parking lot behind City Hall, and that is supposed to read parking garage behind City Hall.
Councilor Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You heard all the noise about the parking, 24/7, taking away from the businesses. We, we need to stop building parking garages. And I understand that costs money. But I'd like to see if the mayor, the administration, could look into a study of building maybe a four or five right here in the back. You're going to build up. And you have the city workers that all work here. You're taking them off Broadway. IST, they need a place to park their cars. You eventually going to hurt the businesses if we don't, if we, if we don't do this. Now, you have the shuttles coming here for the Wynn Casino. So, you have the church up the street that uses a parking lot. So, we, there's a way we can do a four, five-story parking garage. So, I, I understand it costs money. So, I'd like to refer this to the mayor and give me, give us a written. They don't have to appear here. I, I don't want to have a six-hour meeting, I don't want to have a six-hour meeting, 10-hour meeting over a parking garage. If it's feasible, and if they're doing a study where they are going to be building a parking garage, and let us know in writing, and then at that point, we could send it to committee if we want more information.
You want to send it to the mayor in planning?
Yes.
Could they be the ones that develop it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed on that motion. Read number 32 on the agenda, please.
Item number 32. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Fred Capone that a representative from the mayor's office in community development appear at the next council meeting to explain the terms of the contract with Blue Bike and to discuss proposed locations within the city.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I got some good news up front. 32 and 35 have the same thing.
Yes, they have.
So we'll be able to get rid of 35 later on. That's the good news. The bad news is I've got a couple of issues with this particular item. The first one being, I'd like to know what the terms of the contract are. You may recall, I took issue with the line bike situation, not because we had bikes being used. That's a positive thing. We want to promote use of a bike. We want to get vehicles off the road. We want to try to help reduce the emissions. That's all wonderful. The problem is, we lost an opportunity when we did the line bike. The administration was so concerned about the information that we were going to gather from the bikes, that they lost sight of the fact that we were allowing a vendor to use us sidewalks without any compensation. We were taking something away from the people, and we didn't give anything back to the people. I had suggested that even a simple 10%. There were 30,000 rides that went out, there was $30,000, and simple 10%, not for the sake of generating fees, to take that 10% and do something with it, something positive for the community, whether it be to help the less fortunate. We have a fair amount of homeless in this community. We have people who are less fortunate than others, that could use that assistance for turkeys at Thanksgiving, toys at Christmas time. There is a desperate need to educate the community about the rules of the road for bicycling. We could have used that funding for that without costing a dime to the taxpayer. It was a big miss. And, you know, things happen. I raised it. So that brings me to my second concern. The mayor was here, I think it was during budget time, to talk about blue bikes. And I asked him specifically, where do you propose the blue bikes to go? And it was said, on the bike path. I said, beautiful. Got no issue with that. I specifically requested that this body wanted to be involved with where the locations of future blue bikes were going to be. We were assured that nothing would happen without consultation with this body. So then we saw that there was a PR piece about bike racks at the casino. Could care less. That's great. They're out of the way, it's not an issue. That wasn't a concern to me. What was a concern to me is when I saw a 15-bike rack with an overhanging solar panel and an advertisement in front of two residential properties. I received calls from both of those residents. Part of that bike rack actually impedes on a handicap parking spot. So then you look around, more blue bikes get dropped in. They're actually in the street, on the top of Prescott Street. Then there are multiple locations on Ferry Street. That's all fine and well, we all know we have a desperate need of parking spots. So now we lost all those parking spots to blue bikes. Another concern is the way that the rack is set up. In order to pull the bike out, you need to back into traffic, oncoming traffic. So now we create another safety issue. So my sense of frustration and disappointment is we did not have that conversation, we were not part of that conversation, and now we have these bike racks that are impeding on public, that are creating concerns with public safety, impeding on people's quiet enjoyment of their own property, impeding on a handicap park, and taking away valuable parking spaces. So what I want to do is I want to ask that someone from the administration, perhaps the mayor himself, and someone from community development, come to discuss, A, what the terms of the agreement is with Blue Bike, to make sure that we didn't make that same mistake that we made with line bike. And the second part is to see where the future locations ought to be. I think it's vital that this body is involved with that. We get the phone calls and complaints from folks when things are located wherever they are, so I think it's important that we're part of that conversation. So I want to refer this to the mayor's office, community development, and I want to ask that until we do have that conversation, that there aren't any more locations for Blue Bike. And this is not a statement against the bicycles. It's a wonderful thing for so many reasons: exercise, emissions, reducing traffic on the road. But when you're going to drop these things and take away parking spots, you're going to put them on the sidewalk and impede people's ability to cross and cause safety issues, this body needs to be involved. And that's my concern, especially when we were told we were going to be involved, and then we just cut out of the process completely.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McGlaughlin, do you have your hand up?
Mr. President, I did. I appreciate it. I have received a numerous amount of phone calls. One issue, I've been working with community development on the corner of Prescott Street and Main Street, there's only one parking spot in front of a business on that corner. They took that one parking spot away by putting a 15-bike rack in front of that, in that one parking spot. So we're talking about putting meters on main roads to be able to allow people to park? We don't need to worry about that any longer, ladies and gentlemen. The blue bikes took care of it for us by putting these mega two bike racks on the streets. I'll be honest, I ride the line bikes. I'm probably the one counselor in this chambers that actually utilizes these bikes. And that's not a joke. I go quite often with my girlfriend bike-riding. And it's a great program, and it really is beneficial to the people in the city of Everett. But to see what we saw this past week with the blue bikes, the rollout was a disaster. I'm sorry to say it. They just dumped them. Who came up with the idea to put them where they put them? But not one of them makes sense. Got to be honest with you. So I, another problem I have tonight is, we vote to go on to a summer recess. I'm okay with it, no problem. But where do we go now? So we now don't have a meeting until September unless the meeting is called by you, Mr. President. So now are we not going to address this issue until September? Well, the bikes, the bikes are utilized now.
If you want to have a meeting on this, we can schedule and have it anytime.
Well, exactly. And that's what I was going to ask you, Mr. President, is I think that this is such an important issue for that every neighborhood that these bike racks have been put in, that I think tonight, we need to set a meeting, for a special meeting, to be able to address this, because I think truly that this program needs to halt immediately until we come to these chambers and have a table discussion with blue bikes about, A, who gave them permission to put them where they are located? B, who came up with the map of where they're going to be located? And C, how we're going to move them, because they can't stay where they are. So until that happens, I don't think, as Counsel Capone said, you put the bike in the bike rack, you now have to back it out of the bike rack. It's now you're backing out, walking out onto the traffic, on Ferry Street, Main Street. It's a major concern. What I saw this weekend, and like last week, on Main Street and Ferry Street was a major concern to me. So, Mr. President, I ask you respectfully to call a meeting for a special meeting.
Counsel Capone's piece, he wants to call a meeting on it?
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it came through you, Mr. President.
I know, for a second. Cambridge, they're on the side, Cambridge has a lot in the sidewalks.
And I'm okay with them being on the sidewalk. That's okay. If they're on the sidewalk, and they're in a reasonable area on the sidewalk, and the sidewalk's wide enough, and I know there are a couple of places that way, fine. But having them on the street where the back is going out onto oncoming traffic?
Absolutely.
It's ludicrous. I apologize.
I have Counsel Hammond, and then Counsel McCasey.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further to say. I mean, we've got a good job in Counsel Capone, good job in Counsel McGlaughlin. So I guess I'll just second the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that motion, I have two more speakers, Counsel McCasey and Counsel Florio.
I mean, something of this magnitude that they have, you could get out to Walgreens, put it maybe in that parking lot, and you can get out to the other Walgreens, put it in a parking. They don't have to be put in the street. And like I says, on Ferry Street, take up three spots there. It's crazy. There's no parking as there is. Then, you can't park on the front of the house on Broadway till 9 o'clock. I mean, the businesses are getting killed. They really are, what we have left for businesses. I mean, I think that whole communication, I mean, that whole transportation thing should be brought out here, and there should be changes in that thing.
Correct.
There's not a doubt in my mind. There's no place to put those on the middle of the street. I don't even think Boston has them on the middle of the street. You know, I mean, you can put them in places with these parking lots. You go to Walgreens, and you can tell, you know, get a spot that's away from everything under the trees.
You can get Glen Dale Park.
Glen Dale Park, you can put them. That's what they're supposed, put them in all the parks, but keeping the heck out of the, what you call it, out of the streets.
Correct. Thank you. I have Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know Counsel McGlaughlin said we're not meeting for the summer. We're just not going to have regular meetings, but it doesn't mean we're not going to address this. This is a business item that needs to be addressed. So I don't know about the sponsor, but the recommendation would be, give it to the city clerk, with the recommendation that we can get the mayor and the people to meet. Because if somebody's going on vacation, you don't want to have that meeting without the right people over here. So whoever we invite, whoever the council wants to invite, to make sure that, yeah, so you could make sure that they're available, that it's a certain date that we want to have the meeting. So.
Before I, Counsel, get me a, Counsel Capone.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that the members feel the same way that I do, and very happy to refer to the clerk to try to find a meeting, a date that works for everyone, and coordinate that through the president.
Correct.
Because I do think that the bikes in the street, not only is it a public safety issue, it does, it does cripple the businesses. So it's important. So the individuals we want would be somewhere from the planning department, represented from the mayor's office, and I think that that probably is all we would need. And, you know, the most concerning thing about all this is, we were told we were going to be part of the process, and we weren't. And then they just dropped their, now that may very well have been an oversight. But the reality are, you're dropping these bikes in the street in multiple locations on sidewalks, and this body wasn't part of that process. And we were told we would be, and I think we all understand how crucial it is that we be involved in issues like this.
Correct.
So if you can coordinate that with the clerk in terms of a committee of the whole, and that would be great.
Committee of the whole. That was my question.
Yeah. Committee of the whole, and sooner rather than later.
On the motion, Counsel McGlaughlin, are you satisfied with what I meant?
I just asked that my colleague allow me to become a co-sponsor of this, seeing that many of these are.
Absolutely. Any members that want to be on it, I'm more than happy to add them.
The question, if the whole board, the whole committee?
If everyone wants it, that's fine with me.
All the colleagues will be on that piece. And on that motion, Counsel Seminelli?
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. Through you, for Counselman Seminelli. So did I understand, Counselman Capone, $30,000 we made on the line bikes?
No, no.
Sure, may I answer that?
Go ahead, Counsel Capone.
No, on the line bikes, through you, Mr. President. The line bikes last year, they did 30,000 trips. So Limebike made $30,000.
Okay.
I recommended that we should have done a 10% so that we could have used that for the community.
Thank you.
So instead, we allowed a private business to make an extra $3,000 in profit, use our sidewalks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. President, so Counsel McCasey, for $30,000 profit to a company at which we got no percent in revenue, we're going to destroy $3 million worth of businesses on our city streets and the public safety, of which Counsel McGlaughlin had mentioned. You have to back the bike out. That should be shut down tonight. If it's a public safety problem, we done, we just did something, and it's a public safety problem, okay? And we're going to let it just keep happening? Okay, so when someone pulls out of that bike rack and gets killed, are now we responsible because we know better? You know, you really should really consider what the blue bikes are doing here, why they came here without city council approval or understanding or input. Really stop this now, like you stopped the psychic or whatever we just did before. This should be stopped right now. It's a public safety, it's a nuisance, and there's no tax, no tax advantage for us.
Counsel Capone, what's your pleasure?
No, well, first amended so that we conclude all the members. So I would make that motion.
Okay. We have a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed on the motion?
And on the piece itself, it's a point well taken, that's mentioned on behalf of Counsel Seminelli. Unfortunately, we don't have the authority to unilaterally do it. These bikes were put out unilaterally, and we wanted to be part of that. So we've done as much as we can do. We're requesting that no more bikes be put out until it's met with this body and we discuss it. We'll set up that meeting for the committee of the whole, and we'll try to do that as soon as we can. We can address why they were put where they were, if we can pull them back, what kind of contractual arrangement has been made between Blue Bike and the city. So there's a lot of questions that we need to get some answers for.
And chair, it's also for.
Absolutely.
The liability.
Well, this information, and the chair, go right to the mayor's office first thing in the morning?
Yeah, I write them.
Fred, do you get a list of who would invite?
By Wednesday at the latest.
Who would invite? Should we give that list out to them?
I'll try to get this piece to them tomorrow.
In case the mayor's not watching.
It's never by, never late in the Wednesday do I give this information to the administration. Because just in case you guys reconsider it, so.
Counsel McGlaughlin on the motion.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, on the motion, I'm just honestly urgent that we have this meeting immediately. If it's three days, or five days, seven days, we need to have this meeting like tomorrow. And I know we can't, but we need to have it tomorrow. We need to, this is something that I really think is of most importance.
Does it work? I think we'll work on that right now.
Yeah, we'll figure out. And, you know, you were going to send this to the mayor, and he may take action right away also, so let's give them a day or two, and then, and then maybe there's a solution. If not, then you can have that meeting. You know what I mean? But we'll, I'll move on it as quick as I can with the president.
Can you communicate with us immediately, Mr. Clerk?
I will.
Because I think, again, honestly, I don't care what day it is, I think that all of us will show up and be here.
By Wednesday, we'll, the president and I will communicate with the group.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
They didn't vote, so as amended, you want to vote?
Yeah, so as amended, inviting the individuals to the committee of the whole that we are discussing.
Do I second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, you read 33 on the agenda, please.
Item number 33. Mr. President, it's a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne A. Matousky that the city council support U.S. Senator Ed Markey's bill on Capitol Hill that will stop the robo-calling to citizens.
Councilor Matousky.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is before the United States Senate, and Ed Markey, our senator from Massachusetts, is the sponsor. And I want to let him know that this city council supports efforts to hopefully eliminate these robo-calls that have become so annoying. These people are so clever that they, you know, it'll say Everett, Mass., or a very common name. I had a Mike Smith call me. I know like three Mike Smiths, and it was a robo-call. But they are so clever, and it's all geared to mostly senior citizens who are getting ripped off in every different department. My father passed away a little over three and a half years ago, and I kept his phone number. And, you know, if he doesn't get, and it's pretty sad, three or four robo-calls a day. Hi, Anthony, you know, we want to fix your chimney. You must look at who got it, put chimneys in 10 years ago on the building perimeter. However, they do these things. Clean your carpets. And they're very, very clever, and it's very annoying. And I know what happens on cellphones also. I happen to have a landline, and it's really over the top at this point. But our senator from this state is sponsoring... Excuse me. Is sponsoring a bill to stop these robo-calls. I'd also like to send a copy of this to Senator Warren and our Congresswoman now Priestley, because I'd like them to support this also. But it's really over the top. They've become very clever, these people. (coughing) Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. There's no more questions? Yes. On that motion, Councilor Capone?
Yes, I wholeheartedly support it. But under our rules, the sentiments, it can't be postponed unless, I mean, it's got to go into committee unless two-thirds vote, vote in favor of it. So, I would move that we, we vote to override Rule 18, I believe it's Rule 18, to make sure that we can do exactly what the sponsor wants to do. So, I move favorable action on the suspension.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Needs to be a roll call. Yep.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay.
This is to suspend... Excuse me. This is to suspend Rule 18 so you can vote on it this evening, Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor, sorry, Hamlin?
Here, yes, President.
Councilor DeFlorio, that's who I was looking at. Councilor Marquez.
Yes.
Councilor Matousky.
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin. Councilor Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
You have suspended Rule 18. Now you may vote on the order, on the resolution, excuse me.
Favorable action on the resolution as stated by the sponsor sending out communications.
Seconded, all in favor?
With that, seeing how the entire city council supports this bill, I would like to amend it and add the entire Everett City Council.
Yes.
Second.
And Councilor McKinnon is not here, but he's told me personally that he is in favor of this also. Thank you.
Del, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
So, as amended, to me to write, draft the letter, and I'll send it to the legislative... Yes, I can. To the two state senators, to the two Massachusetts senators and I representative, correct?
Yes.
Yes. You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Can you read number 34 on the agenda, please?
Item number 34 is, Mr. President, it's a resolution offered by Councilor Fred Capone that the mayor and police chief consider conducting a bike safety course or a minimum utilized ECTV program to educate bicyclists as to the rules of the road and the importance of wearing bright clothing to promote safety.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Going in line with what we talked about earlier, we are trying to promote more use of bikes. And, you know, some folks are very courteous users, and other folks don't know the rules. I've seen people, from young kids to grown adults, zipping through traffic, coming in the opposite direction of traffic, blowing through a red light on their bike into an intersection. Without educating these folks how to operate the bike safely, someone's going to get really hurt. So, perhaps if we are getting some sort of monetary receipt from Blue Bike and Lime Bike, we could use those funds. That way, we don't have to take taxpayer money to do it. It can self-fund itself. Maybe register bikes like they did years ago with serial numbers. When you register your bike, you get the pamphlet, you learn what the rules are. A lot of people aren't using helmets, and people are going to get hurt. So, I'm hopeful that we can do something with that. I want to refer it to the mayor's office, the police chief. And I'd like to at least request that ECTV just put, and I know it seems a common sense, but that folks that are operating their bikes maybe consider you, wearing bright clothing. Because if a driver is distracted, that one split second, if they see the bright clothing, it may make a difference in saving that cyclist's life. So, if we could ask that ECTV promote that, and we refer this piece to the mayor and the chief, the police chief's office.
Thank you. I have Councilor Hamlin and Councilor McGlaughlin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. What Councilor Capone has said, I've seen it all, I've seen the whole thing happen. I'm pretty sure that like a year ago, Massachusetts passed a ruling that all bicycle drivers must obey the rules of the road. That means going through red lights, cutting in front of traffic. And I'm going to ask our clerk to do, because I know he's such a wonderful, wonderful clerk, we said that earlier tonight, to try to find that out. And I, if it's, if it's true, it should be easy to find. And put that on ECTV.
To find what? I'm sorry, I missed that part.
The rule that the Massachusetts department came, whatever Massachusetts department came up with it, for rules of the road to apply to bicycles. And have that go on ECTV. And let them know that, yeah, you guys are really responsible. And find out if we can issue a ticket to them. I think when a bicycle goes through a red light, you should get a ticket too.
They're doing, again, I keep repeating Cambridge or something, they do it a lot.
Yeah, okay.
They do it a lot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, thank you. I was just wanting to echo comments of Councilor Capone, thinking that it's very important that we bring it up to speed with everyone that is bicycling. I see more and more of all the bike paths that are open in the mayor's vision to get more people on bicycles. I think with that being said, I think having a safer community of bicyclists would help everyone. And just to apologize to Councilor Capone, that was me on the bike, Councilor, that ran the red light. I apologize. I won't do it again.
Councilor, you have your helmet? Thank you, Councilor. I have Councilor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's exactly what I was going to say, is that there are rules. They can't go through the red lights. So, the other thing is, I think, you know, this could have sounded crazy, but I think that every city in town should consider the people that ride bikes to come and get a license that you get for a car. Because, no, a license that you put around your neck and you drive saying that you have a license to drive this bike. Because a lot of them are not driving them right. They are going right in the middle of the streets, they're going in front of cars, and, you know, God forbid, you're driving at night and you don't see this person, and you kill a person. How do you live with yourself for the rest of your life? So, I really believe that maybe they should take into consideration where everybody that rides a bike has to take a class and has to take a course. And they have to pass the course to drive the bike. So, maybe something we should think about. Thank you.
Councilor Napolitano.
You know, I mean, I agree with Councilman DeFlorio to a great degree regarding this. But, you know, the thing is that even if we're not able to license them, there is one important law here that will correct a lot of this. And that's a law of natural selection. Let's face it, if you're not smart enough to, to, you know, stop before you go through an intersection, maybe you don't need to be in the food chain. You know?
Councilor? That was a great one.
Yeah.
I get it. Councilor Seminelli?
Mr. President, through for Councilman Seminelli. So, we have six people that ride the bike from Malden to Everett Square. We painted the lines for $30,000. It keeps going and going and going. They're not riding bicycles no matter how many times you want it to happen. And in the meantime, they're killing themselves because they're not wearing a helmet, they don't wear the red reflector, and they're not obeying the rules and regulations of the road. So, yes, we want to be good environmentalists, we want to be good conservatists, we want to be good athletic students of Everett society, but there's six people that ride the book on Broadway in the morning, and guess what? When you're driving your car, you don't look on the right-hand side, and God forbid, maybe mom is going to be the one that hits the person on the right. Whoever invented the idea that traffic goes and then the bike goes on the inside so that when you take the right, he's dead or she's dead. Please, it's not practical, but we keep spending time with these bicycles.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Thank you. I don't want to beat this down any more than it already has, and I understand everyone's frustration about the city get out of it, what didn't they get out of it. The placement of them sucks. We all agree with that. Pocket spots, no one wants to take our pocket spots. But we do get a benefit. It's a transportation alternative for our residents. You know, we're thinking too backwards here. There's too much old-school thinking. We need to change with the times. Dinosaurs went extinct because they couldn't evolve. You know, times are changing, the world's changing. Different world. Different world. That's all I have to say.
Councilor Capone, sponsor.
Thank you. You know, this particular piece is just talking about the bike safety, and that's, that's the concern. And I understand the rule of natural selection and all of that good stuff. So, I'm going to speak up for the less fortunate out there. The reality is, I've been, I've been asking for a bike safety course for about four or five years now. And we keep pushing towards requesting people to use bikes, and you'd like to think that people use common sense. Maybe some people just need to understand that there are rules. I know folks like to drive opposite the flow of traffic because they can, they can see the car, and I understand that. But the rules are supposed to go with it. You're supposed to stop your bike at the stoplight, treat your bike like it's a vehicle operating on the road. And I think people, people, yeah, people need to know that. You know, and in the interim, we're asking them to wear bright clothing. You shouldn't think, you have to tell somebody to wear something bright so you can be seen. But people don't, some people don't think about these. Some people are very good about all these things. But I think in order to try to promote safety and to promote more usage of bikes in a safe manner, we really need to put some sort of program together. And that's really what I hope comes out of this, is that we put, so there's got to be, with all the different bike organizations across the country, there's got to be some pamphlet that has the rules of the road that we can somehow access. And, you know, maybe we can't license people to drive bikes, but, you know, maybe if we can get them to register them, like we did in the past, we used to register them so the social security number was, I mean, the serial number was on file, and if it got stolen, you could maybe relocate it. But the reality is, some mechanism that gets them here so we can hand them a pamphlet so they can understand what they should and should not do, just to promote their safety. And that's all I'm looking for in this piece.
Mayor, could we look into, maybe Blue Bike has a safety program?
They may.
Or Lime Bike?
They may.
Okay.
They may. So, the request was ECTV to promote safety, drivers consider wearing bright clothing, and then referring it to the mayor and the police chief to try to put together some sort of a bike safety course.
Thank you.
And for me to find the DOT rules to, for bicycles, to hand to you and ECTV, right?
Yep.
Okay.
The motion had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 35, though a duplicate, I have to read it.
Yep.
It's a resolution offered by Councilor Fred Capone that a representative from the mayor's office and community development appear at the next council meeting to explain the terms of the contract with Blue Bike to discuss proposed locations within the city. This was accidentally omitted. I put it on twice, so.
Yeah, no action necessary, as it's a duplication.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Last piece on the agenda, number 36.
Number 36, final piece. Mr. President, it's a resolution offered by Councilor Fred Capone that the mayor consider appropriate dedication in the lower Broadway area to memorialize the prior neighborhood, those who have, those who have lived and died there, and all the industry and businesses that have contributed to the city's rich history.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're all familiar with that area. We've got two members on this council who've served and represented that area for a very long time. They know that area. Any of my colleagues who would like to add their name to this, I'm happy to do so. As we know, that whole area down the line is changing dramatically. With the casino and the reconfiguration of a lot of the property, a lot of the residential neighborhoods been changed, it's going to continue to change. Before it disappears completely, I think that it's only appropriate, we have to, we don't want to forget our past. And part of our past is, at one point, I guess the area was wilderness, and then it became farmland, and then the Industrial Revolution came, and, you know, that is part of our past. And what happened is folks built houses near those plants. That's how they got to work. They didn't have cars. They didn't have the problems we have today with vehicles. So, people who worked in those factories and plants, they, they raised their family. A lot of people died in those plants. So, part of this should be a memorial. And we have to remember our past as we move forward into our future. And I want to make sure that the neighborhood, all the contributions of folks who came from that area, the businesses that helped build the community are memorialized, there's some sort of commemorative plaque or something in the area, perhaps in the island, the area between Bow and Broadway. And it stands there forever to remember our past as we move into our future. And again, as I said, if anyone wants to join this, I'm more than happy to have them there. As I mentioned, we have two members of this body who served and represented that proud neighborhood for a long, long time. So, my...
And also, just so you know, maybe they send it to the...
And our clerk, too.
Yeah, I represent that area. But just so you know, the historical commission and I are working on historical plaques throughout the city. You might want to add them into here because maybe they, they'll have some input, and maybe that will be part of our walking tour that we're creating.
I think, I think that's a wonderful point. So, the first thing I'd do is I'd like to make a motion to amend to include whichever members want to be part of this.
The city government?
Government, I'd make that motion.
Seconded, all in favor on that motion?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
And in regard to the piece as amended, I'd like to refer it to the city clerk, to the mayor's office, and to historical commission.
On that motion, I have three speakers. I have Councilor Napolitano.
Well, my, I was going to ask that we be included, and I want to, I want to show my appreciation to Councilor Capone for including both myself, and I know he's also referring to Councilor Matousky. I represented that area for 20 years. My colleague, 36, I believe? Councilor Matousky, 36 years plus? Quite a few. So, we know a lot of those families personally. And of course, as other members in this room, I saw, we had family members who worked at the places, you know, like the Charleston Chew Factory and the various businesses down there. So, I do appreciate being invited to, that the, my, my first recollection when I first decided to run for city council was a resident down on Line Street. As I'm going around getting signatures, she read me the riot act about how she felt that this was a very neglected community. And, you know, I made a point to stay, you know, stay in contact with people in that neighborhood my entire career here. So, thank you for including us. I think it's a great piece. It does show some of our history. The mayor said it during the, during the, during his speech yesterday. You know, Everett for a longest time were the back door to Boston. Well, this change is now the front door. And, and, you know, the thing is that this is, this whole area is just going to be dramatically transformed. But it's good to know where we came from. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Matousky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just jotted down some names, and there was so many decent people. You know, when I first got in and first ran in '79, Paul Ellid was the assistant city clerk, Farmer Alderman, Guy DiNuccio, former councilman, Sammy Bernard, Joe Freelove, a school committee guy, wonderful guy. His house is actually still on Broadway. Son Anthony owns it. Very dear friends. Henry Vitrano, his house has been torn down. Sammy Serino, his house is still there on Broadway. Calla Gennelli, I guess, yeah, that house is still there. Bob Crowley, everybody knows that, former Veterans Commissioner. And so many decent people that I got to know over the years. But there still is a neighborhood there on the second half of Bow Street. You know, and I was amazed as I went by the, the other day, there's one little gray house, if anybody looked at it. And I, I saw somebody walking out of it the other day. I thought they were construction workers, but I slowed down. It was one, and, you know, I guess they held out, they didn't sell the house. Similar to Atlantic City, you know, they built the casino around the house. But I have so many good memories. Matter of fact, I own some real estate, I wish I still had it on Mystic Street. I bought it, this is just a quick example. I bought a house when I was 18 for 20 grand on the corner of Mystic and Robin Street. And they sold it for, of course, it was a corner lot. And I put my grandmother in there. I was only 18 years old. And it needed a lot of work. And I put a new roof on it, little by little. But my grandmother loved it. Truck drivers would wave to her, she'd sit in the back, but she just thought it was the biggest thing. And I had it for about 10 years, but I sold it to another gentleman, he did some work to it, and he sold it to the people who sold it to the casino people, and they sold it for a million dollars. But, you know, you can't cry over spilt milk. But that's just an example of... Every business, more or less. But some of the most decent people, as a matter of fact, I probably wouldn't have won the first couple of elections if it wasn't for that neighborhood. There was about 400 votes down there at one time, as you know. It was a big voting block if you could get them out. And I did. They really come out strong. They voted at the Whittier School, the Senate School at the time. But now I think, you know, if there's 100 votes down there, doing something. But, you know, I think Councilor Capone is right to recognize some of the people that lived there, and the family, the Marley family, the Giadanos. Oh, I could go on and on. Rosenizaro just passed away from Line Street, the Turners. Eddie Lucas, of course, he relocated, he sold his house. But there were so many decent people and good memories for me, you know? But my grandmother loved that Mystic Street house. She was the landlady, you know? It was a, it was a real, a good time in my life when I bought that. But that was a long time ago. But needless to say, I think it's good, good idea to recognize the neighborhood as it was. And don't forget, Everett Station was down there. I mean, I can barely remember the old Everett Station. You had the last stop across the street, a little bar next to the Malden Auto Body. And that's why, that was the last stop, I guess. Mike had a good memory, but, but I remember as a little kid, that little, that train station, you know? And the little coffee shop that was in there, you remember that? Like you could get hot chocolate, whatever. But I'm going way back. I could barely remember that, but that's a big part of it, too, the old Everett Station with Honda cars.
Yes, it is.
You know, and there was just so many laughs down there, the people was... Yep, Sammy Bernard, they had more little speakeasies there. There was pool rooms, there was a lot of... But anyway, I had a lot of laughs there. A lot of good memories, and I hope that, and I'm very impressed with what it looks like today, I'll tell you that.
Thank you, Councilor.
I agree with the resolution. Thank you.
Second.
Councilor Capone? Seconded?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Before I, before we adjourn, and we want to go home, I have two announcements. Everett Girl Softball this Saturday, where bringing out refreshments for them, they'll pass them out themselves, be all from the council. That's from 12 to 2:00. And also, I know we all have wanted to put an input on what we witnessed yesterday and what this city, it's just a start of what went down there at the casino. I talked to John Taco today, tried to get an estimate of how many people. He said it's hard to keep a count, but he was close to 50,000, and it went smooth from cutting a ribbon to, I won't say close the door because it doesn't close. So, for 24 hours, we had no major issues. I don't think anybody had many calls, and it's a great start for the city.
If I could make one more announcement, Mr. President, please.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Tomorrow night at the Piling Library is the first of a series of public meetings to seek public input as part of the new superintendent of the school's search process. So, it's tomorrow evening, Tuesday, June 25th at 6:00 p.m. in the community room at the Piling Library. Every one of us is encouraged to go, and members of the community as well. Just wanted to make you all aware of that.
Thank you.
Motion, chairman?
Seconded? All in favor? The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen.